Okay, we are live on YouTube.
And the applicants for the first item are present.
Okay, welcome back to the afternoon session of the January 19th LPC Public Hearing and Public Meeting Day. We are resuming this afternoon with the public hearing portion of our agenda, starting with item number one. And this hearing is being held via Zoom and if you would, and also livestreamed on YouTube. If you're just interested in watching, you can do so on our channel on YouTube. And if you are interested in testifying, you may join the meeting at the time, estimated time listed on our agenda. And that is located on our website. And we will also display meeting information for each item as we begin the testimony portion of that item. So with that, I'll turn it over to Corey Harala to walk us through the hearing agenda this afternoon.
Thanks, Sarah. We'll begin with hearing item number one, LPC 21-03086. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Brooklyn Block 3026 Lot 1. 160 Moijer Street and the Williamsburg Houses Individual Landmark. This is an international-style housing project designed by William Liscazza and Richmond H. Shreve. And the application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows.
And Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please click on the screen to activate the presentation. Just remember to state your name for the record and you may begin.
Great, thank you very much. So good afternoon, everyone. I am Jonathan Cruz with MDG Design and Construction. And we're joined today with, by Brian Newman of Newman Design. And we're here to talk about Williamsburg Houses, also known as 160 Major Street in Williamsburg, Brooklyn. But before I get into the specifics of this project and our proposal today, I'd like to just give a brief overview of our teams and how we got to this point. So again, I'm Jonathan Cruz with MDG Design and Construction. My team is a general contractor and developer based in Long Island, New York. And Brian Newman has joined us as well. He's part of our team and his team is an architectural firm that's based in Long Island, New York as well. MDG, we partner with Wavecrest Management Team, which is a Queens-based property manager and developer. And together we form RDC Development. RDC Development is our ownership entity for the Williamsburg Houses project. But we've also completed two other NYCHA PAC conversions. We've completed the Ocean Bay Apartments in Far Rockaway, Queens, which is a similar campus-style development that NYCHA has in Williamsburg, which consists of 24 buildings, 1,395 apartments. That was completed two years ago. And we are currently in the final stages of our Batances Houses project. Another NYCHA development located in the South Bronx. So that is a scattered site development that consists of 40 buildings and 1,088 apartments. And Brian Newman and his team was the architectural firm for that project as well. But both of those projects were not historic. So we're excited to propose our, the complete rehabilitation and preservation of Williamsburg Houses in partnership with NYCHA. And this project will be our first NYCHA PAC conversion that is of a historic nature. For Williamsburg Houses, we'll be partnering with NYCHA by joining and entering into a 99-year ground lease, where NYCHA will remain in ownership. And RDC Development will then immediately conduct the rehabilitation and preservation of Williamsburg Houses and manage the property for the duration of the lease with NYCHA. And the properties will remain permanently affordable. We're also, you know, managing various different aspects of the scope of work, which includes various interior upgrades such as kitchens and bathrooms improvements, as well as building systems improvements. So new heating systems, roofs, site improvements, security systems. We're also particularly focused on the abatement of any lead or asbestos hazards. But for more information on the scope of work and more specific detail on the historic nature of the property, I'll hand it over to Brian Newman, our architect for the project.
Thank you, Jonathan. Edith, just, I'm sorry, how do I go into the presentation?
Sure, so you have control of the screen. You can advance from this slide, which is our title slide, to the beginning of your presentation using the arrow keys or the mouse.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for the introduction. Thank you all Commissioners for your time today. Williamsburg Houses, we have here today, as many of you, I'm sure, are aware, very historically significant project, originally designed and built in the late 30s, 1936 to 1938. It was the first large-scale federally funded housing project in the United States. It was actually established or enabled by President Roosevelt's New Deal that helped start funds these types of projects. There was an architectural committee that was created by the Housing Authority at the time. Richard Shreve was the committee chair. And they brought in the Swiss architect William Liscazi. There we go. So originally, the site in Williamsburg, obviously, was approximately 12 city blocks. During the master planning of the project, they created four superblocks. It encompasses 23 acres. And during that master planning, 20 buildings were designed. They're all four stories. There's approximately 1,620 units on the site. Various bedroom configurations from one bed, from studios all the way to five bedrooms. So 1,620 units on the site. The buildings, as you can see from this original aerial, are set at a 15-degree angle from the street. So it breaks the city grid there. And the intention was to open, open the space and open the site for additional pockets of courtyards, recreation space, and allow for light and air. The architectural language that was established for these buildings was referred to as either European modernism or international style. And you can see here the site plan. You can see the, the 20 buildings shaded in gray. Essentially, it's four superblocks. Our project encompasses three and, three and a half of these, these superblocks. This center section over here or to the left side, that is a community center and a public school. The gray shaded areas are the, are the buildings. You can see here, the floor plans were essentially known as either H's, either lowercase, lowercase h, uppercase H, or even a T shape, with some little appendages to create those additional courtyard feelings. You can see the, the crank, if you will, the 15-degree change here. And here's just a blow up of an original 1938 floor plan, just to give you an idea of the, the plan itself. Atypical to today's apartment buildings. Multiple points of entry, known as stair halls, essentially. These stair halls are basically vertical entrances into multiple apartments. Depending on exactly which building it is, you could have access to three to five units from each one of these stair halls. So really no common lobby or common corridors, just vertical transportation or vertical access into the individual apartments. So what we have here are historic slides from around the late 1930s. We can see the international style of architecture here. The buildings were originally designed with, at the time was somewhat controversial, tan brick as a departure from the original red brick or the, the context of the red brick of the neighborhoods. It was synonymous with the, the housing. So they went with more of a tan brick and exposed concrete slabs. That's the horizontal banding you see on the facade. Obviously, also the windows here are steel frame windows, steel frame windows. And you can see a blow up of maybe one of the corner windows that we've enlarged there as well. Very clean, very modern, very progressive for the time. Quite honestly, quite beautiful building. On the bottom right, you can see retail was also a component in some of the buildings. That's, that's along Graham Avenue. Just like to take a little sidebar for a moment, as Jonathan had touched on, today we're focusing, obviously, on windows only. But this is part of a much larger rehabilitation project. And we will be coming back to you to present the overall master plan for site improvements. Very extensive site improvements for landscaping and paving and site furnishings, lighting, security cameras, the retail component as well. So all those things will be historically rehabilitated as well. So we have photos today of basically existing conditions. Essentially, you could see here, the windows specifically are one-over-one double-hung windows, bronze frame, aluminum, aluminum bronze frame. These were replaced in 1985. So these are, these are photos of how the building exists today. So one thing we, we'd like to point out, in 19, so as it relates to 1985, those windows were replaced, approximately 354 of the original steel casement windows in the basements do exist today. There are approximately 8,000 windows in the overall complex. And these were some of the window replacement drawings that we're able to locate from sort of the, the 80s rehab, if you will. Just a little bit more history of the facades. In the 90s, the masonry, well, also in the 80s, the blue terracotta was removed during this window replacement. In the 90s, luckily, NYCHA and LPC got involved and rehabbed the project back to more of the original intent of the project. So all the masonry and the blue terracotta was put back on. I'm just going to go back one slide. So this blue and this masonry is actually not the original material, but it was certainly a very good homage to what the original design intent of the project was. So in the 90s, the masonry and this, this blue tile was put back onto the building. So doing all our research, and I'd say it's about nine months we've been doing the research and working with historical consultant Heritage, as well as multiple window manufacturers and the general contractor. We were able to research and establish, based off also the, the NYCHA replacement window drawings, seeing some of the field conditions, some of the details that were there, that the original drawings were most likely by Finestra. The Finestra window, casement windows, the steel windows by Detroit Steel Factory. We were able to locate that, that window catalog. We just put a quick, you know, excerpt of the catalog in here, which was established or published in 1933. This was also one of the original elevations of the project from the 1936 or so drawings. Unfortunately, the, the window itself is not drawn in there. But again, that NYCHA replacement window had documented what the windows were as far as Molyon configuration. So between the NYCHA drawing and the Finestra catalog and sort of putting the pieces together and doing our history and our homework, we were able to establish what we thought the original window configuration, and obviously using historical photos. We, what we did here, we took a typical elevation, replicated what exists today, sort of the one-over-one double hungs, as you saw in, in the photos before. And our proposed window down below, we'll go to the blowups in a moment. There are approximately four main window types to the project. And here we just showed, I mentioned before, the existing cellar windows that remain. Here's a photo of the existing cellar window remaining. So that leads us into what I'll call the Type A window, window on our project. As you can see, we're referencing how we sort of established this. That would be sort of the vertical Molyon spacing, the button spacing as well, and the overall layout of the window. On the top left, you'll see that's sort of a replication, if you will, of the original window. On the right is the proposed, and then down below is a photo of that existing window type. So our intent here was to obviously provide as much design intent or design back to the original intent of the project that the original steel windows had. We keep the vertical spacing as close as possible while balancing today's needs of thermally resistant window and some tenant needs, which I'll talk about in a moment. It is an aluminum window as opposed to a steel window. That obviously helps with the thermal resistance. These are casement windows. They are no longer double-hung windows. The casement windows obviously provide some hurdles to meet today's tenants' needs. The one glaring obvious difference between the original and the proposed is the fixed louver that's in the middle of this proposed window. So as we went through this, we have, we have multiple tenants. The majority of tenants have window AC units. Obviously, for a number of reasons, we need to keep those, we need to still be able to provide an option for air conditioning for the tenants. We reviewed, one of the options we reviewed to completely eliminate this issue was a split system or provide a VRF system. We investigated that quite significantly. Number of drawbacks, one being by putting the, the split systems in, we need to put condensing units on the roof. The units are approximately six feet tall, plus another 18 inches or so on the curb. So it's, it's close to seven and a half inches or so, plus our additional insulation. It's almost eight feet above the existing roof line. And at minimum, we need probably over 300 of those units. So they would certainly be an eyesore for someone walking by. And, you know, you'd see all this sort of condensing farm. Additional challenge is the electrical panels in the apartments do not have enough service in the apartments. So they would have to be upgraded. And the buildings themselves don't have enough electrical supply. So it would call for a complete overhaul and upgrade of the electrical system and possible improbable call to, to kind of, to upgrade the service. Another issue we, we looked at, or another option, I should say, that we looked at were floor-mounted AC units for the tenants. This definitely got significant pushback and objection from the tenants. We thought it might be a feasible option, being that you could open the casement window when you wanted it. You could put the, the sort of snorkel with the louver out to the window. We needed some type of temporary panel, obviously, above that in the, in the void that doesn't, when the window's open and the void that the louver doesn't take. But the tenants had significant objections about losing their floor space. These are obviously, some units are small. And then when they're not using them, where do they store them? In addition, it's, let's just say, for instance, every unit was a one-bedroom. So picture a one-bedroom and the living room at minimum. It's over 3,200 units at a minimum that would be required compared to. Many of the tenants have their own AC units already today. So that's the reasoning, or some of the reasons why we came with this architectural fixed louver in the design to meet those, those tenants' needs. To be clear, this is a fixed louver. It is a finished louver from the factory, from the window manufacturer. It is not a stamped-type sleeve or anything like that. It's going to be manufactured by the window manufacturer and installed in the factory by the window manufacturer and same finish as the rest of the frames. Window Type B, obviously, the, the louver goes without saying, but the intent here is to keep the same number of vertical units, to keep the same horizontal mottens and keep the daylight openings as close as possible to the original design intent. Similarly, C, C is an, is a corner unit. If you're looking at the proposed and the, and the photo below, it's the same orientation, meaning the left-hand side would be, is where, is where the masonry is. The right-hand side is the, the open air. So that would be your top right is the open air. We pushed the louver to the left-hand side here to sort of minimize the visual impact of that louver and try to keep that, that glass corner, that open corner, if you will, of the original design. So that's why we shifted the louver off to the side there, to really give you that nice glass corner. Here's the opposite, opposite view, same window. We call it a CC type, but essentially it's the same type. D is just another window configuration, a four-unit vertical, vertical unit. We have the cross-sections now. Section AA, we sort of aligned all the, all the units, if you will, across. You can see all the extrusions across. The buttons essentially line up. They're basically the same profile or overall, overall profile, overall shape as the original mottens, and they are the same seven-eighths of an inch. The head and sill are slightly larger than the original. That's because of that original steel angle that's embedded in the mortar, which was left during the orig, during the 1980s double-hung window replacement. We did investigate pulling that out, but it's, it's completely embedded into the mortar. And then with the replacement of the masonry, we're extremely concerned. And there's, obviously, there's lead on there as well. But we're extremely concerned if we pull it out, we're, we're affecting the integrity of the, of the masonry and possible water intrusion back behind the masonry in there. So we think leaving it in there, and it's probably some of the investigation that might have occurred in decision-making, we think maybe in the, the 80s with these double hungs. So we've left that in there. This is a very similar cross-section through the fixed unit. This is a cross-section when we have the AC sleeve. So what we've done right now, we have the AC sleeve sitting about two inches proud of the, of the actual Molyon. We've taken the louver and made an extrusion. The extrusion gets glazed into the actual Molyon, and that extrusion holds the architectural fixed louver. Again, it's all manufactured by the same window manufacturer in the same factory, and it'll all be finished exactly the same as the Molyons. It's about two inches proud of that. We were concerned about condensate from the AC. So the idea is creating this, then taking the factory, if you will, universal AC sleeve from the inside, placing it in. No one sees anything different from the outside. And then the tenants' ACs can be placed right in here. So it's a factory uniform finish from the outside. The two inches, we can play with a little bit. That was our initial, our initial idea of just to keep the unit away so the condensate doesn't come back in. But we have some latitude with, with that movement there.
Brian, if I could just interrupt in the interest of time, maybe it would be helpful to show the plan section through the corner window assembly, since most of the other drawings are pretty repetitive. And then you can go back to the, any of these later on if there are questions.
Will do. Thank you. So plan view, plan view, through the AC. This is our, our representation of the corner view, our sort of, what we believe existed out there based on the Finestra catalog and how it would have been put together with this sort of kit of parts. The catalog does not have an exact replica of the window that's out there today, but using their, their methods and their pieces, we think this is how it was built and actually had a four-inch Molyon, I'll call it, in the corner there. And then this is our proposal of the, of that C corner, four and a quarter to the daylight. We feel it's, it's pretty close to that original intent. Obviously, the, the rest of the drawing kind of matches up with, with the balance of the typical plans. And you just happen to see here, this one is the, has the AC sleeve off to the side, as I mentioned, closer to the masonry there, trying to keep that glass open as much as we can in the corner. That's just AC sleeve details. Skip over that. We did a color match. So obviously, the, the intent is to bring it back to the original, the original color, the gray color. We did laboratory investigation and we colored matched that. And so that would be the intent as well. I believe the next slide is the appendix. Yep. Okay. So I hope I hit fast forward enough at the end.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at this time, so.
Maybe?
Oh.
We, one of the elevation, that sheet with the elevations, the typical elevation?
Sure. Am I back to the, okay, I'll go backwards though.
That's okay. I just wanted to get a sense of where the AC units are relative to, yeah, an overall building. All right, thank you. That's good.
Okay, great. Okay, all right, so if we don't, oh, Commissioner Letzti, please go ahead. Just a request to unmute.
Sorry about that. So I appreciate all the issues surrounding how to effectively install air conditioning here, which is necessary. But what happens in terms of the airflow into the apartments? I mean, it must reduce it.
No, so we've maintained the same operable, right. If it was a, if it was, if we were to keep the orig, the current conditions, where an AC unit is taking up 50% of the operable of a double hung, you would essentially decrease the airflow. But what we've done is we've looked back to the original intent of the, the casement windows. And if, for instance, that unit had two units that were fully operational and, and opening, we made sure we, we kept that same fully open and not same operable number of units. So we've always gone back to the original intent, because airflow, yes, was probably the, one of the original designs in this. So we've mimicked that. If there were four operable units, we, we did that as well. So you can see here, for example, Type A, you have four casements. So we maintained four casements and put the louver in the center here. And, and that was also to try to clean, while we did that, we were trying to be cognizant of the spacing and the uniformity of the Molyons, because obviously, a vertical operable is slightly different than a fix-to-fix. So, so we tried to keep it organized when, when we did that as well.
And the capacity of the ACs is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify and answer that, we used a fried-rack sort of universal wall sleeve as if it was a new construction building. That's what we use to size our louver and, you know, and accept that. So the intent is, we build the, we build the louver and the extrusion to get it glazed into this unit. And then we take the fried-rack wall sleeve and, and we're able to put that in there. So it's a standard wall sleeve as if it was a, a new construction through wall masonry unit almost. And then any tenant or management can help the tenant just place that in there. And it does not have to come in and out. It can just be left in, in there. Obviously, there'd be an insulated closure panel for any tenant who, on the inside, for any tenant who does not have an AC sleeve, an AC unit.
All right, thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? Okay, I think at this time, we don't have any other questions. So we'll move to public testimony, and we may have questions after that. So I'll turn it over to our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, Anthony Fabre, to walk us through the testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand. And we will begin with anyone who signed up in advance.
Yes, so we have two people signed up, and I'm going to bring in Kelly Carroll first. Kelly, you should be able to speak now.
I am. Let me just minimize my Zoom. Thank you, Kelly Carroll for Historic Districts Council. HTC is thrilled to see the extensive research that went into this proposal. Approximating the historic window configuration at the Williamsburg Houses is more than welcome and is essential, essential to their eligibility as early international-style buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm going to bring in George. Thank you. And I'm going to bring in George Calderaro. George, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. George Calderaro, Chair of the Preservation Committee of the Victoria, New York Metro, Chapter of the Victorian Society in America. Architects Leskaz and Shreve relied on a very small number of carefully selected materials to create the Williamsburg Houses complex. The design was greatly diminished by the loss of original steel casement windows, a significant component of the design and so characteristic of the buildings of this era. Although falling significantly beyond our formal period of interest, this proposal is so welcome from the New York City Housing Authority that VSNY is very happy to support its approval. We commend the applicants for their proposal to restore these very important facade elements and welcome their future collaborations. Thank you.
I don't see anyone else with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We did receive the Landmarks Committee report from Brooklyn Community Board One. And while no recommendation was issued, the committee raised several questions concerning the molyne at the corner joint, how much the windows would be recessed from the masonry and potential impacts from the HVAC components.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant to see if they would like to respond and maybe talk a little bit about that discussion at the community board and respond with respect to the detail at the corner, which you did present to us. And any other final thoughts?
Sure, sure. So subsequently regarding specifically the corner or how far the, the unit's back, we, we can confirm approximately three and five eighths. You can see that detail over here is where the molyne is sitting back from the masonry. Very close to the original. Obviously, as I mentioned before, we are sort of jumping that, that existing steel frame. So you have to pull that out and close that masonry opening in there. But the intent is to keep it as physically possible, physically close as possible to, to not create any water infiltration issues. So that's a three and five eighths inch approximately back from the masonry. So you're getting that shadow line. We're not going to create this sort of flat facade. And then, and again, I can just confirm, as I did a moment ago, which we did not have this detail at the time. The, let me just go back one. We, we further investigated, further developed this four-inch detail that, that gave us a better understanding or comfort level that we are very close to the original design intent. We're, you know, a quarter inch. Again, this is our historic interpretation, but utilizing not only our experience, but utilizing Heritage's vast knowledge. Specifically, they have a window division in their, in their consulting group that, that came up with that particular detail using the kit of parts and knowledge and experience from that Finestra and Detroit Steel catalog. Forget that the last item that CB had, there was, there were three items, I think you said.
It was the, the depth of the placement of the window.
That, that was a three and five eighths. It was the corner. I, I know they had also, I'm sorry.
The H, it was HVAC. It was, it impacts.
Okay. So I think we just discussed the, the AC, the air conditioning, how it's needed, the investigations that we've done to, to try to get around that. It's really does not seem feasible. I know they did have two other questions. One, insect screens will be provided on the inside of units. And the windows do open 90 degrees, but per New York City Department of Health, obviously they have the four-inch limit stopper safety.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, I think you have a question.
Yeah. And, and this is kind of almost on the edge of not relevant to us, but so you have these air conditioning louver boxes, right? And you're going to have a, an apartment dweller who has her own air conditioner and she's going to stick it into this, into this box, right, that sticks out about three inches. But obviously her air conditioner is meant to hang out of a window that, you know, it's usually hanging out a lot more than that and it may be of a different shape. It'll be probably smaller, obviously. But it's not meant to be supported in that way, right? It's meant to be supported at a flange that hangs out the window and that rests against the window for support to some extent. I mean, in this picture, for instance, you know, the actual flange of the air conditioner is to the right somewhere. So what I worry about is that, you know, I'm sure you've thought about it, but I can't think about how to, how to solve it. What's going to keep a, a, someone who's got their own air conditioner from saying, you know, this just doesn't fit me? And this knocking that thing out and putting their own air conditioner hanging out the window?
So, so, so this, this AC sleeve is going to be with, with angles bolted through and attached, physically connected, mechanically connected to the, to the, to the molyne in here. And so you have a fixed sleeve, which is like I said before, a universal sleeve. And that sleeve is going to be braced on the inside of the masonry wall. So it's, it'll be a substantial substantial unit that'll be structurally, have some good structural integrity. So as I mentioned before, whether it's the tenant or management or GC during construction, placing that unit in there, we'll be placing that unit in, inside a structurally integral sleeve that, that's not going to be wobbling and, and can't be, or shouldn't be removed. If someone tampered with it, and just coming back to specifically the outside, if someone tampered with it and pulled it out, we would still have our extrusion and architectural louver and all that on the outside of the building. So hopefully, I, I don't think someone would get that aggressive. I don't think there's any reason to, as I said before, it's a fried rike, universal wall sleeve that's done all the time for new construction. So really don't anticipate any issues with that, but even, you know, even if it happened, the aesthetics on the outside would, would still maintain their design intent and, and design integrity.
Thank you. I got you.
Okay. Any other final questions? Okay, I'm going to start unmuting everybody so we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
No, moved.
And Commissioner Lutsey, would you second that motion?
Agreed.
Call in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. So the hearing is closed and I think as we heard in the testimony from HTC and the Victorian Society that you know, this is quite exciting that this complex has had these unfortunate existing aluminum one-over-one windows for some time and that this is a planned design to return the spirit of the original windows with some minor adjustments to accommodate AC, HVAC and some minor adjustments to the configuration. And that's the kind of thing that we have seen else in other buildings where we've approved aluminum replacement windows for steel casement windows and where they need to accommodate HVAC. And then, you know, there's the, while the, the configuration is almost being restored, the finish is going to be restored based on a paint analysis. And the details, as always, we see some variation when we approve aluminum replacements for steel. But the, the interesting thing is that steel windows, as they're manufactured today, actually have their glazing putty on the inside and have a flat profile on the outside, unlike the historic steel windows. So in some ways, the aluminum windows can, can get that profile like even better. But there are always some variation in dimensions that we often discuss in great detail in our, in our review of these applications. So I think we'll talk about that as, and the applicant did talk about the corner detail, which was raised by the community boards. I think that will be in the area of discussion. So with that, let me start with Commissioner Holford Smith.
Sure. Well, I think as you said, Chair Carroll, that this is a, will be a vast improvement over the double hung units that have been there for 35 years. And bringing them back to the casement configuration will, you know, bring it much closer to the original design intent. A couple of things, I think, you know, given the fact that there are some 8,000 windows, I would imagine that they have a little latitude to work with the manufacturer to help get the details closer to the original. Like for instance, the corner molyne looks like it could be reduced in size slightly to even further reduce the, the four and a quarter. And, you know, the, the, the depth, I, it's true that the modern, modern steel casements have their glazing on the inside, but these are very, very deep on the outside between the face of the extrusion to the face of the glass. So I know these are stock extrusions and modifying them is, is difficult and expensive, but I'm just hoping that they can work a little bit with the manufacturer to try to tweak those. And I think the AC sleeve is a great concept, but I think I share some of Commissioner Goldblum's concerns about them. I'm actually looking out my window at three different air conditioners and they all have louvers on the side. So if these sleeves were designed for new construction, they weren't designed for, you know, retrofitting an existing air conditioner. They may need to look at that. And perhaps the sleeve has to come out a little bit further to the exterior to accommodate the, the louvers on all, you know, on three, three or four sides of the, of the sleeve. But I think in concept, this is a big improvement and I think I could approve it with those, with those comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped Commissioner Chapin. Go ahead. Diana, sorry about that.
Okay. Yeah, I think first of all, I'd like to compliment the, said this is their first, you know, presentation on his historic item and I think, and their project. I guess is their first as well. I think they did an excellent job of doing the research and presenting it in a good way for us, for the Landmarks Commission. So I, I do think in general that it's an excellent proposal. I would share with my colleagues concern to make sure that it, the design will accommodate different kinds of air conditioners. And perhaps they could work with the staff on that element to see if there's some additional adjustments could be made with regard to that. But I think in general, it's an excellent proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. We are, we are a lucky, a lucky bunch today to get two Lescazes in a row. It's a rare thing and, you know, it just, looking at this project after having seen his house, you really get a little taste of the optimism and the optimism of that period where, you know, slum clearance and public housing didn't have the baggage that they do today, didn't have the sins waged against them that they do today. And that this was really a proud architectural solution to a problem that government was trying to make. I mean, these are great housing developments and the fact that, that they are finally getting the treatment that they deserve is wonderful. So thank you to the city. Thank you to the, the applicant, to the architect who's made great care in, in trying to bring these back. More power to you. Can't wait to see the rest. It's an amazing, amazing complex. I share Anne's concerns about the details. They can work this out with the staff. I really think that the, the, I love the mutton profiles and the fact that they're simulated through divided lights opposed to just appliques. That's really, really good. There's much about this that's really, really good. I think that they should really do a mock-up with, with existing tenants to make sure that, if they haven't done it already, to make sure this is going to work for people. But I think there's plenty of room for flexibility with how this is dealt, dealt with. I think the major advantage of it is that it will introduce a uniformity into the facades that was part of the original architectural intent. And it will, in doing that, it will subjugate the air conditioning units to a secondary role aesthetically. The only, the only thing I would add i- in terms of a comment is, is I would just ask them to work with staff on the placement of the louver box. In some cases, it's symmetrical. In some cases, it's off to one side. And it's really got to be looked at over the entire facade to make sure that, that the rhythm is right and that they are reading in a way that is consistent with the architectural intent. Otherwise, I, I'm very grateful and happy to think that this is an appropriate proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yes, how fortunate we are to be dealing with two Lescazes creations on the same day. Had the other approach been as well thought out as this one, a housing project, we'd all be much happier, I believe. I agree with Ann and Michael about the details. I thank this applicant for treating Lescazes the way he needs to be treated. I can approve it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I couldn't agree more. I'm so delighted to see this historic housing project being given its tender loving care and the, the details. So this is approvable.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I think it's mostly been said and I don't want to go on any more than, than to say what a great thing to have two Lescazes in a row here. And I thank the staff for organizing it that way. That just didn't happen out of nowhere. Yes, this, this, this is a great proposal and I think, again, working out some of these details with staff will be needed, but otherwise it's very appropriate and, and very much welcomed.
Okay, Commissioner Lutsey?
So I agree with everybody. It's, it's very exciting. This is a wonderful piece of architecture that has been greatly diminished. Very much so because of the windows and, and these windows, 8,000 windows. I mean, it's unbelievable. So many, such a big complex here. It really takes a lot of attention, research and care to figure out how to problem solve a situation like this and deliver, deliver the building back to its original stature and also deliver important, an important service to the people who reside there. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this project and I agree with everybody else that the devil's in the details. And it's very important for the applicant to work with staff on all of the issues raised, the, you know, the corner, the, you know, the depth, et cetera.
Okay, great. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with all my fellow commissioners and I want to add that I've been working for the housing commissioner, commissioner in the past. And the renovation of these buildings are so beautifully done that the addition of these windows will make it an incredible project.
All right, great. And Commissioner Gustafson?
Yep, nothing to add. I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I do too. Everything's been said and this is approvable.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So I think that we have a consensus to approve them today and with contingent upon their continuing to work with staff on the details and as they develop those details, particularly at the corner and the placement and how the HVAC sleeve intersects. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion and do it sort of as broadly as I just did?
Yes. I had some technical difficulties at the beginning, so I didn't get to hear how this name is pronounced. The street name.
Moyger is, according to the internet, is Moyger Street.
Moyger, okay. All right. In the matter of LPC 21-03086160 Moyger Street in Williamsburg Houses, an individual landmark. An international style housing project designed by William Lescazes and Richmond H. Shreve. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows. I note that the historic windows were multi-light steel casements.
and the majority of them have been replaced with one-over-one double-hung units. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the removal of the existing windows will not eliminate any significant historic fabric, that the proposed gray painted aluminum windows will match the original windows in terms of metal, material, and finish. That the proposed multi-light panes flanked by multi-light casements will recall the streamlined character of the historic windows while accommodating the installation of through-window air conditioning units. That the air conditioning units will be finished in gray to blend in with the surrounding penetration. That the proposed windows will recall the profiles and details of the historic steel windows. That the establishment of a master plan for windows and through-wall air conditioning units will ensure a uniform penetration pattern and consistency of these installations on the facades. And that the work will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the Williamsburg Houses, individual landmark. However, I find
Thank you. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I find that some of the proposed dimensions and details do not closely recall the typical historic windows, specifically at the intersection of the corner windows. Therefore, I recommend that the applicant work with the staff to refine the details and dimensions of the corner units and the AC sleeves.
Okay. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Okay. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved, and please continue to work with the staff on the details. And we'll now move to the next item.
Thank you all very much for your time today.
The next item is number two, LPC 20-01343, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 196, lot 19, 216 Dean Street in the Borum Hill Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built in 1852 to 53. And the application is to install a rooftop solar canopy, bulkhead, and planters, and to replace windows.
And Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
There we go. My name is James Hill, or Jim Hill, from Urban Bioneering Architecture. And we are proposing some rooftop addition to 216 Dean Street in Brooklyn. I just jump right in with the presentation?
Yes, please do. You should be able to advance the slides.
All right, let's give that a shot. There we go. So, as I said, we are here. Sorry. Here we go. And this, I'm the superseding architect, and the previous architect had approval for largely interior renovations, passive house renovations. And so you can see the interior is largely being gutted. The windows are being replaced. All this is previously approved. Our work is really focusing on new work to the roof, and that consists of a roof terrace. And let's see here, a solar canopy above the roof terrace and a new bulkhead. I can kind of zoom in, not a little bit, so you can get a better idea. The terrace is geared towards the back. The bulkhead is basically a very small sloping minimal bulkhead. I'll show you in the side or elevations, existing front, proposed front. Again, the windows, passive house windows, typical for the street, have a mix of divided lights. This is all previously approved, so we'll focus on up on top. We have the sloping bulkhead roof, the front railing, the solar canopy, and the rear, the existing proposed. The previously approved windows in the back were two-over-twos. We went, we've changed those to one-over-one and more in keeping with the actual previous style, as I understand, and with the neighborhood. And so again, in the back, we can see part of the railing is a bench. I have a detail. I'll show you in a second. The gate for firefighter access, the solar canopy, and the bulkhead. Section through the building, the new stairs going up, sloped bulkhead, the solar canopy on top. The canopy in part rests on the bulkhead and on these kind of tripod legs. When elevation on the roof going the opposite direction, there's a side of the bulkhead with the door, canopy on top, and the legs. The terrace steps down a little bit, so there's kind of a lower area in the back. And this is the area that has a kind of a planter with a bench and a railing up behind it. If you pull that in a little bit, you have a little bit better view of what's going on here. You can see the level of the roof, so we're stepping it down again to keep it very low to the roof. This is an example of a similar structure by the same company, Brooklyn Solar. It'll be white underneath the anodized, the clear anodized, I believe, metal structure, very much like this. The edges, we're trying to get white to blend in. These are the stands. In our case, this area over here would be where the bulkhead would be. These are sightline diagrams. They're kept as far back, so from across the street, it's not visible. We have pictures taken from up and down the block. Here's our, here's the project. Here's the kind of pictures from the street, from Dean Street, really going up and down the street on the entire block. It's not visible. The one area is right here, this little view corridor on Bond Street. This is the existing structure that is up there now. I have better pictures of all of this, and I'll go through those in a second. And there's a close-up of this view. Again, I'll go quickly to those pictures. This is the existing facade, or facade as it exists now, where they're doing some re-brown-stoning. That was all previously approved, restoring the stoop. Where there's pictures from up there, so this is the building. Yes, there's a tree here, but even if the leaves weren't there, you wouldn't be able to see it as you can kind of see from different angles. It's not obscured by the tree at all. It's just not visible because it's set far enough back. You're kind of walking down the street towards Bond, again, getting farther back. Again, it's not, even if you were today, you know, with no leaves there, you don't see it. The mock-up is still on the roof right now. Here's that view from across the street at Bond. It's up in here. Again, we'll approach it a little more closely here. And as you get closer, you can see, so here's ours. We've, they wrapped part of the canopy in the netting. The netting down here is the railing and bench. This one right here is the, is two houses down. The roof deck that I would question whether you've been consulted on that. Again, getting closer, this is zoomed in with the camera. So you can see this is where we are, 216, and then 212, just for Baron. So this is on the roof, standing at the corner of, I guess, 214 Dean Street. This would be the railing going around. This is the canopy. These are approximations of the leg structures, and you can see the bulkhead structure here. Zoom in a little bit there, so you get a better idea of that. And there's views from other angles. So from the corner of 218 Dean Street, again, you can see they've got, you know, lots of equipment on 218. This is us. From along the back edge of the roof, also at the edge of 218. So you kind of kept the railing at a certain height here with the understanding that it might actually even be lower by the time we have this step down at the roof terrace. This would be, for all intents and purposes, the view coming out of the bulkhead door. I'm looking west, east. Looking back at the bulkhead, again, from the southwest. All kind of more of the same. And looking at the bulkhead from where you would potentially be standing on the terrace. Views of that deck that's now close to it. Again, it's really just kind of a, for a reference of scale of what you see through that corridor and what's already up there. This is the view from the terrace down to that corridor. You can kind of zoom in and see that black Jeep is where we were in the beginning of those pictures. That's really it. Kind of go back to here, and you have any questions?
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
For this solar panel to function, does it have to be that high? Or is it just high because of the bulkhead? Could it be lowered?
It's high for several reasons. One is to gain the most surface area, unshaded. If it's lower than the bulkhead, then it would be in shade of the bulkhead, and it won't function. It's also up high because it provides a shaded area for the roof terrace. So I think that's because of the two primary reasons, yeah.
Right now, it's 12 feet high, right?
Yes.
The bulkhead is. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, but just to clarify, the code requires that it be how high?
It's not, there's not a code
There's no.
For the height?
Okay.
I'll just jump in, actually. We've seen quite a few of these solar canopies, and our understanding is that there's a nine-foot required clearance for fire department access, clear path. So anything above that could potentially be brought down to that height, but it can't be below nine foot clear underneath.
Thank you, Corey.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, I don't see any other questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. So I'm going to ask Anthony to walk us through the testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand, so we can identify you.
So we do have a few sign-ups. I'm going to call up Kelly Carroll first. Kelly, you should be in the meeting.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. This is the first of what will be many solar canopies that come before the Landmarks Commission this year. HDC is never at odds with renewable energy, but we do ask that this and future canopies be as low as possible, similar to other rooftop accretions. While the four-over-four windows proposed for the facade are appropriate for an 1850s rowhouse, HDC is curious if the applicant found any evidence of this configuration during their research. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to bring in George Calderaro. And George, you should be in the meeting now.
George Calderaro, Victorian Society, New York. The proposed solar panel installation standing high off the building's roof in order to accommodate a deck will be very visible to the public from Bond Street, and therefore, we do not believe it's architecturally appropriate to the building or historic district. The Victorian Society of New York urges the commission to exercise great care in its reviews of this and similar energy-saving and sustainability-based proposals that will affect the integrity and appearance of historic buildings and districts. We worry that as more and more of these come forward, and if they are approved, the precedence will become overwhelming, and it will be impossible to contain the dramatic changes that may result. It appears that this would be the first such installation in this row of buildings. The most sustainable building is the one that already exists and continues to be used or reused. Sustainable design and historic preservation should be mutually supportive as they share similar objectives. But when conflicts arise between the two, preservation shouldn't do all the compromising and defer to alterations that squeeze the last bit of energy saving from historic buildings. These projects can result in much harm to historic buildings and districts in exchange for an infinitesimal improvement to global sustainability. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we don't have anyone else with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
Yes, we did receive the resolution from Brooklyn Community Board to recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. And I do see, I think, another hand raised, Anthony.
Yes, someone just raised their hand. So I will bring in Ramina James. And you should be in the meeting now. You just have to unmute yourself. Are you there?
Hello, I'm Chair Sarah Carroll's boyfriend. And yeah, I'm your boyfriend.
I think we need to remove this person from the meeting.
Yes, let's cut this guy out. I just removed him. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there is no one else with their hand raised, so we can move on to Rich again.
Okay, and Rich, I believe that the community board recommended approval, correct?
That's correct, yes. That's the only other written testimony that we have.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hill, would you like to respond to the comments made in testimony?
I think the only one worth, the only one that I can probably actively comment on is the windows, and just to note that they were previously approved at staff level. And they are, we've done other work on this block, other passive house work on this block. And, excuse me, I can only say from our experience in those directly across the street that it was exactly the same window configurations.
And just to clarify on that, it's not the windows at the primary facade that the commissioners are looking at today. It's actually just the top floor of the rear, which, while technically visible, that's why you're seeing them. They're not matching the, you know, historic multi-light configuration. They're asking for one-over-one, but again, it's at that same long-distance view that you saw the stuff at the roof at.
Right, right. And they're currently one-over-one. And actually, if they were not visible, the staff would be allowed to approve new one-over-one within those openings. So it's this long view through which one can see the solar panel canopy as well as that top floor, albeit obliquely and at a distance. Okay, so just, you know, the other comments made in the testimony were about the size and visibility of the canopy. And I think if you want to just, again, maybe go to that view to show the point of visibility, I know you had a zoom photograph, but if you can go to just sort of the real photograph so that one can assess how that visibility may affect the streetscape. Okay, and then I think the question is, you know, that was raised in the testimony was sort of about the height and size of it, and we've asked some questions about this as well. And so the 12-foot height, just to be clear, is that still well above the bulkhead? The bulkhead is not exactly what's driving the 12-foot height, correct? Mr. Hill?
Yeah, just hit, unmute. It's, it is, it is very close.
Okay.
Let me switch over to this section. And because I do think it addresses that the height, it's 12 feet above The height, it's 12 feet above this section of the deck. But it's really only a little over a foot above the actual bulkhead roof. So by the time we get the thickness of the roof structure, the door at a height that it can actually get above the roof terrace, you know, we have to lift that structure off the roof terrace. So all of these things are adding up to the height. And we've tried to keep it as low to that bulkhead structure as possible.
Okay, and the bulkhead is as low as is required by code?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, we have about a foot difference there. Alright, any other questions, commissioners? Okay, not seeing any other.
There is, there is one person. Oh, okay.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Does the top surface of the solar array be level with the top surface of the bulkhead?
I think just in terms of the way the structure works out, I'm not sure that it can. It was raised up to keep the structure from penetrating the side. We can look into, I have no objection to bringing it down to such a height that it would work better with the bulkhead.
I have no objection to ask you to do that, please. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So we haven't closed the hearing yet. And, oh, Commissioner Jefferson, you go ahead and then we'll...
One other question, the supports for the roof, for the, for the horizontal member. Why does it have to be angles? Why couldn't it just be vertical posts? Simple vertical posts, that would be the language of the building itself.
That's a good question. I think it probably would be best answered by the manufacturer. They use this kind of standard rig. And my understanding is it's the best way for them to eliminate forward and backward movement. So it's a kind of a triangulation to resist a lateral, this is up there and it's picking up wind. They could easily shift it forward and back there without having an angled member. There really is no lateral resistance.
But they could change the language, make it just vertical and construct something that doesn't look like a separate system from the base.
Mr. Hill?
I suppose they could. This is, as far as I understand, this is the only thing that they use. This is Brooklyn Solar and this is kind of their standard approach. I suppose we could look into it and see if there's an alternate that would have to be more of a custom, something or other. There would probably have to be some sort of diagonal somewhere on there that would give us some lateral resistance. But we could, if that's the direction that you'd like us to go, we can look into ways of trying to get them to do something a little different from their norm.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just going to jump in just again for a second on this. I just want to let the commissioners know, this is not the first time we've seen this particular system by that company. It's been approved on several occasions, I think, including at least a couple of cases more visible than this one. But aside from the visibility, as mentioned, it's the lateral movement issue as well as the ability to spread the load of the structure to multiple attachment points rather than, you know, four posts, for example. And that's helpful for dealing with the older structure of the historic roofs. So it is something that you've all have seen before and that's been explained before. But it's good to look at it again because beauty is in the eye of the beholder for these particular canopies.
But my issue was primarily the color. You know, it could be painted black, you know, and be less visible, but...
And that is something that the commissioners have asked for before on at least one other case was a custom finish. So it's not sort of the aluminum, you know, kind of clear aluminum finish. But again, it's subject to the distance from which you see it and those other factors.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any other questions, Commissioner? No, okay. Alright, so I think we're ready to have our discussion. I'm starting to unmute all of you or request to unmute you. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I moved.
And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, great. Hearing is closed and we're going to begin our discussion. And so as Corey mentioned, we have seen other applications for this particular system and approved it in some cases in areas, buildings where it has been more visible than this. And I think that we have asked in some cases for a different finish or other mitigating factors. And I think that can certainly be part of the discussion. So just a reminder that we have two components here. It's the, well, three really. It's the canopy, the bulkhead, and then the one-over-one windows which, at the top floor, which are also obliquely visible. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Oh, thank you, yes. The canopy is fine. The height seems appropriate. And it works, it works. I think the window, we should, the window, if the window should be two-over-two, I don't understand the issue with the window.
Okay, well, they're obliquely visible. And so while there are no historic windows there now, we know from our experience that historically they were probably a multi-light window. The applicant is proposing one-over-one, which is seen elsewhere in the row and which would be eligible for a staff-level approval on the rest of the facade and would be eligible for a staff-level approval if not visible at all. So the staff could approve a one-over-one here if it weren't for this one view. But the view is long and oblique, and that, those are considerations the commission has taken into account in other instances where we've approved a change in configuration.
I'll go with the commissioner's view, historic view. My issue with the, with the canopy is that if we start to add canopies like this and they're visible, the language of the existing building and the language of the canopy should kind of relate to each other. I mean, right now they're in a kind of a dialectic conversation. And these buildings are small, they're small-scale, fine buildings. And to put something that becomes so dominant on it in a different language, to me, is not the right way to go.
Okay.
In this particular, in this particular case, because you can see it so well, I think it's probably not appropriate.
Okay. Alright, so even with some of the mitigating factors we've discussed as in changing the finish of it and asking them to explore with the manufacturer, are there adjustments that might be made?
If it was lowered and the color changed.
Okay.
I'll go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafen?
This is, the windows are fine. I am very concerned about this, about the way the solar is done here. You know, we spend a lot of time and effort trying to protect the rooftops of buildings just like this and of which there are literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds in historic districts around the city. And, you know, what's driving this is this notion that one has to have the roof deck and the solar both. And if that choice is made throughout the city, this is, we're going to end up essentially having lost the rooftop battle. And, you know, there are other ways to get solar. And I guess there's a have your cake and eat it too problem. So I'm, someday maybe I'll get there, but right now I'm not there on this.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I mean, if, if there's, I can understand that it's, that this acts as a kind of a temporary structure. But from the, kind of the armature, it looks and seems to be much more substantial than that, than something that is reversible. I mean, I think it is reversible. So, I mean, lots of things that we otherwise don't approve are reversible, so changeable in some form. So I think that that's my issue with it. I mean, I'm in agreement with the, with the others who have said that this is, it would not be a good thing if this was ubiquitous and everywhere in the city. I, that's true. I don't know that that's going to happen. I think there are going to be changes in the technology that are going to make these, these particular solar panels so much smaller and more, you know, compact and usable. I mean, in a shorter, in shorter order. So what do I think? So can you talk for a moment, Chair Carroll, about your thoughts about the kind of reversibility or, you know, the temporal nature of these structures?
Well, I think that as an installation, it is by nature more reversible than construction or something that changed the level of the roof, right? So it's just a matter of taking it off and patching. I think, and in terms of sort of the precedent in seeing more and more of these, I think you're right, technology is changing quickly on solar panel measures. But also I would say that the commission, you know, evaluates each site independently. And so while this view is through this one particular gap and is a long view, I think one could say it's a narrow corridor and that for most of the portions of this street and on other streets where it's not visible, it wouldn't detract from the district. And we may not approve it on any of the houses closer to the row that you see over the one-story buildings. And I also think that, you know, a painted finish could help it recede, lowering it or, you know, and exploring maybe the lightness of that structure is something that one might do in this visibility. So I do think, yes, I think it's reversible in the sense that it's an installation as opposed to demolition and construction. But I also think that you can look at this uniquely, and this is a particular view and it's not something that's seen for more places and a wider cone of visibility than it might be on some of the other buildings where we might take a different position.
Yeah. Well, I think what you've just, the both points you've just made are very convincing to me, and so I can approve it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I struggled with this one too because you sort of envision these sort of marching down the street. It would be, it would really change your perception of these houses. But I guess that's not really what's in front of us. So taking this one on its own merits. I think if they can lower it to the maximum extent possible, then it would be okay. I think there's also an option for them to put solar panels on the front part of the roof that's not being used. That could be low to the roof. That could potentially eliminate some of these. And maybe make the array smaller. That's a possibility, but I think I'm, I guess I'm okay with it. I'm okay with the window.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I share a lot of the other commissioners' concerns. And I would not be willing to approve this kind of installation generally because I think this A-frame construction really calls a lot of attention to itself. I think that, you know, we're being confronted with something similar to some of the issues we face when we're looking at accessibility issues and how to, you know, ramps and lifts. And a very necessary and important thing to be looking at for buildings, but at the same time trying to find solutions that are at least intrusive. And I think this, I could approve this one with the understanding that they will do whatever possible to try to make this less intrusive. And for me, part of the issue is, well, one is that the structure, because it's very visible, just looks odd. It does not fit into the normal vocabulary of rooftop accretions. Unless you think of aerials or, I don't know what you would think of. And it's standing up higher than it needs to. I too had, as one of the other commissioners, had thought maybe you could put it on top of the bulkhead and make it look like, even have some enclosure and have something even more visible possibly, but that would look like a normal structure on top of a building rather than this kind of odd construction. So I think we're going to be expecting to see some people in the future to look at any of these installations with an eye to them bringing something that looks more like a standard rooftop accretion if it can't be put right on the top of the roof. To try to design something that just fits in better than vocabulary of things you see on rooftops. But, you know, if they can, you know, work with the staff to try to lower this and make this a little less obvious and visible, I guess I can approve this one. But I would not like to see us approving a lot of this kind of thing because I think it just doesn't, it needs to be custom-designed in some way, the structure that holds it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I share the concerns that others have raised. I think this, the, what I hear people saying, which I share, is the structure of this thing is weird-looking. The open trusses, you know, it's going for a kind of War of the Worlds, super mod, 50s, I don't know, zooty kind of look of some kind. I'm not sure where it's trying to be, but it's definitely not trying to be quiet. So, and I hear, and what it sounds like to me is everyone saying, well, you know, we don't want to say no to a solar installation because we believe that it's the right thing to do and everything, but Jesus, this is awful. So I really think that the ones that I remember seeing that we have approved have been simple. Tube up, tube across, tube down, panels on top. You know, rectilinear, simple, quiet installations, and usually in black. And I think that, those are the ones that I recall seeing in the past. We have approved without this extensive sturm und drang. And I think that the applicant should try to find that. And if this company, which makes wonderful zooty things, you know, wants to work in Brownstone, Brooklyn, you know, I think there's probably a second kit of parts that they could find that would work, that would not be excessively expensive, you know, aluminum tubes or steel tubes painted and something that's just a little bit more visually quiet.
Okay. Commissioner Devonshire?
Thanks, Sarah. I think it's kind of interesting at this point, I sort of compare the solar arrays to the music industry. 15 years ago, we had boom boxes and now we have the little iPods to listen to our music. Everything seems to get miniaturized as we go along. Last summer, there was, this same company was installing an array on a neighbor-of-mind building. And I left my roof deck, walked down there and was watching them. And I said, why does that structure have to be so large? And the answer from the supervisor was, because that's how we make them. And so I realized then and there that the companies that make these things aren't going to change their design until somebody comes down and says, nice design, but you can't do it in an historic district. And so what I'm leaning toward is what Ann hinted at. Put the solar array somewhere else on the roof, or what John hinted at, which was do away with the terrace. I mean, I would never begrudge anyone else a roof terrace because I built one myself. But if you want to have solar in this case, you're going to have to get rid of the terrace because this thing is too visible and paint... you're going to have to get rid of the terrace because this thing is too visible and paint isn't going to cover it up. It's, it's either got to change the location to someplace where it's not as visible, or it can't happen as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, this is an interesting challenge for us and for the city. I think that, I wish it is a temporary installation and, and that as technology changes, it will, you know, be reduced. But a lot of commissioners made excellent suggestions. So, you know, the, the, the options out there whether you want to place it on the, on the front of the building, the lower portion, I mean, so that you don't need to raise it. As I, I do agree that if you're going to allow this, it should be lowered. And maybe the, the bracing should not be, as Commissioner Devonshire just suggested, and others have suggested, that the, the shape and form of the structural support not be as bulky as, as large.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Um, I think the argument's getting better and better as it's rounding the table. I, I don't struggle with this at all. I think it's unalterably inappropriate. I reject the idea that almost as a guilt trip, we're all, you know, looking at ways of, of approving something that calls such attention to itself. The amount of energy saved by this one, you know, there are many other ways to save energy, even in this one house, if it wants to do that. And even putting solar panels on a roof where it isn't now. This is just inappropriate, inappropriate, inappropriate. I thought the Victorian Society had a, had a terrific, um, their, their testimony was terrific and helped, helped me also over this hump. I am just thinking this is wrong. And they need to figure out another way. This is what's going to become the top of Brownstone, Brooklyn and Queens and Manhattan. Wrong, wrong.
Okay. Commissioner Lutsey?
Um, I agree with my fellow commissioners. You know, it's sort of, there, there is something about this that, that also doesn't even look substantial. Like, in a way, it looks like it would, could, even if it, even if it was well anchored, that could sort of blow off the roof. And there, there are many other ways to install solar panels. And I think further investigation makes sense. I also think that Michael Devonshire was, was correct when he said, look, you can't have it all, you know? Maybe if you want solar energy, maybe you can't have a, maybe you can't have the terrace or vice versa. You have to think about it. And I, I think the whole thing needs to be reconsidered. I'm fine with the windows in the back.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, I think, Commissioner Chapin, did you want to add something else?
Yes. I, when Commissioner Goldblum was talking, it reminded me of an idea I had when I first saw this, that if it had looked like a pergola, I might have been willing to approve it.
Right.
So, I was thinking, is there some way to make, you know, actually imagine you're designing a nice-looking pergola and using this as the top. Is that possible? I don't know. But it's another thing to throw into the thinking, thing, I guess.
Right. And I think that's much what some of the commissioners were saying about design and lightness and, and how it's detailed. So, and thinness. So, I think we'll take no action today. I, I think some commissioners might support it if it was lowered to the extent possible. And maybe that means prioritizing some of the changes that you're hoping to make overall at the roof. And thinking about finish and detailing and maybe having a conversation with the manufacturer so that we can, you know, start to impress the manufacturer that there may be another approach for historic districts that may ultimately be approved in more instances than just where there's one point of visibility. So, we'll take no action. You can continue to work with the staff on understanding the comments today and thinking about how to come back to us. And we'll have you back when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Very thorough and insightful. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Corey, unmuted?
Thank you, Rich. Moving to item number three, LPC 21-01212, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1043, Lot 42, 424, 7th Avenue, AKA 372 to 374, 14th Street in the Park Slope Historic District Extension. A Queen Anne-style flats building, the store is designed by William H. Worth and built circa 1887. The application is to modify a mason reopening.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Uh, thank you. My name is Joe Chusso. I'm the architect for the project. The owner, David Croman, is also here. To reiterate, we are applying for a certificate of appropriateness for an enlarged mason reopening on a secondary facade at 424, 7th Avenue in the Park Slope Historic District Extension in Brooklyn. Uh, moving through the drawings, this shows the location of the project at the southwest corner of 7th Avenue and 14th Street. These two photos show the historic and current conditions of the primary facade, looking right at the corner. The enlarged opening is actually not visible here. It's on 14th Street Secondary Facade. These are views from 14th Street. The top photo is from the north side. The bottom photo is from the south side. These are just outside the district, looking back at 7th Avenue. You can see on the top here, this is where the existing opening is. It's not visible at all behind the existing wood fence. Also, from the south side of the street, it's not visible at all for that fence. This is a view from across 14th Street. On the left is the existing condition. On the right shows a rendering of the enlarged opening. You can just see a corner of it, just above that fence line. This shows the existing conditions on the left. There's a three-foot by eight-foot mason reopening. Uh, this shows the, on the right, the enlarged opening, it would be six foot by nine foot. I want to point out that the alignment for this enlarged opening actually does match the primary facade openings. The intent there was to make that consistent for also the exterior and interior from that corner. This is going in conjunction with an interior renovation. The owner is also the occupant. They'll be utilizing the apartment. We're also replacing all of the windows on the primary and secondary facades. That's already been approved at staff level. The color of these doors will match the new windows with the dark gray frames. These drawings here, upper left, shows the existing elevation, the new elevation, some section details, and a small portion of the plan. Just point out again, the, the doors will match the window details for the rest of the building. And that pretty much wraps up what we're proposing. I don't know if David Croman has anything to add?
Okay. I think that's great. Thank you for your succinct presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right. Not seeing any questions at this time. I think we'll jump right to testimony. And I see a couple of, a few hands raised. We will, please, if you would like to speak on item, please raise your virtual hand. And we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance. But we will, of course, get to everybody. And I'll turn it over to Anthony to walk us through the testimony.
Thank you. So, we do have a few people signed up. And I'm going to bring in Kelly Carroll. Kelly, you should be in the meeting.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. This proposal would be more appropriate if the top of the new door opening aligned with the lintel of the adjacent window. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And now I'm bringing in George Calderaro. George?
George Calderaro, Victorian Society, New York. Although at the rear of this corner building, the proposed alteration will be visible from 14th Street. There's no guarantee it would continue to be partially obscured for the long term by the wood fence, which could be changed to a more open configuration. We note that the proposed door is unusually tall at nine feet. And we suggest that a standard door height of about seven feet to align with the adjacent window head would be a more appropriate solution. Alternately, a taller door that maintains the width of the opening could work, but increasing both the height and width seems, as proposed, seems like an excessive intervention. Introducing an arched double row of headers above the door to match those of the other openings would be an additional improvement to the design. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we did have someone with their hand raised who called in. I'm not sure if they want to speak at the moment. It doesn't seem like it. So, I guess we should move on?
We'll move on. And if they raise their hand before we close the hearing, we can get back to them. So, Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from the community board recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, I'll turn back to the applicant now and ask if you'd like to respond to the public testimony, particularly with respect to the height or in the relationship of the opening to the rest of the facade.
Uh, yes, thank you. These recommendations and, and issues actually were discussed with the community board. The consideration about the alignment with the rear facade, we're open to that. We, just to reiterate, we were aligning it with the primary facade, so the aligned kind of on the interiors nicely. So, the nine feet, you know, it's not a totally arbitrary number. We are trying to align something so that's consistent. In that way, the width of it also, we want to make a, a much better connection for the family to this exterior space. It's a very nice terrace that they have. An outdoor space like that, they're going to use a lot. They have two young sons. So, the owner, I don't know if they also want to say anything about this, but we are open to the idea of bringing it down to the eight feet so that it would align with the other openings on the secondary facade.
Okay. Thank you. And can you just go to the slide that shows the view of it so we can understand? No, well, from the street?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, from the street, you actually, you see that alignment with the windows on the street-facing facade?
Correct. Yeah. They would align across this corner, yes. That was the intent.
All right.
And we did not render in all the other windows, but, you know, keep in mind, all the other windows will have the same dark gray frames once, once they're replaced.
And that's being approved at staff level?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay. Not seeing any questions. I think we'll move to our discussion. So...
First, I, I do think the owner has been recently promoted to a panelist and may want to say something on behalf of his application. Want to give him that chance?
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for their time. And, you know, as Joe said, you know, me and my family will be living in this unit. I have two younger sons, obviously. Especially now, the connection to the outdoors has become so important for everybody. And, you know, while, you know, eight foot would be fine, you know, we would prefer, you know, to have that nine-foot door out to the terrace, you know, that aligns with the primary facade. You know, I think that's important. It's important to us and important to the design, especially, you know, from the outside end. And would, would really appreciate your consideration with that. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
David Croman.
Thank you. All right. Let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
All right. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Any opposed? All right. Hearing is closed. And we'll begin our discussion now. So, Commissioner Lutsey, would you like to start this one?
Sure. You know, I, we have a problem with this. I, I think it makes sense to have it visually since it's not really, you know, the, it's obscured in part by the fence. I think it makes sense. It doesn't, it looks fine to have it aligned with the, with the, the windows on the side. And I, I think it's, it's, it's attractive. It blends in. And I can approve it.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I, I, I can approve it. I, I, I think I would prefer if it was the same size as the existing window because it just looks better architecturally. I mean, yes, the facade looks better architecturally. But I can understand, I can approve it.
Okay. Right. And that the portion that's visible aligns with the other window. Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, I can approve it as is. I think, you know, looking at that, the image on the right, you know, you really do see it in the context of the street-side windows. And it, and it, it conforms there. So, it's appropriate as is.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yeah. I, I don't think I really buy the alignment with the front windows thing. I think that if the fence, if the fencing material wasn't there, we'd see it as, yeah, maybe aligning with the front window, but out of context with the windows on the side. So, I mean, my preference would be to keep it as it is. But I understand the desire to make it bigger. And so, I can approve it as it, as it's presented, but not because it aligns with the front windows.
Okay. But maybe architecturally, it relates to the scale and character of the house, even if it doesn't align. Okay.
No, I mean, I, I think I want to say that it's not, it doesn't undermine or in any way kind of hurt the, the reading of the house. But I don't think that it really does relate to the proportions or the dimensions of the existing house. I think, and, and certainly not of the, of that side, of the side of the house. But I don't think it's offensive.
Okay. Doesn't detract. Got it. Okay. Commissioner Holford-Smith?
I love that. We're all struggling with this little door. I feel the same way. I think that an eight-foot, eight-foot height would be better, but I don't feel like it would, you know, be a deal, deal breaker to have it at nine feet. I just think the eight-foot would be more in proportion with the rest of the side windows. I like the idea of adding the arched double headers over the top too. Because now it looks a little bit like it's just stuck in the wall.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah. I, I was sort of puzzled as to why it wasn't better aligning with the adjacent window. Have any trouble with the width. And I, I, as other commissioners felt, it should be lower. But, you know, it's, it's not hugely inappropriate. So, I guess if, you know, I can go along with the majority and approve this.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay. Second, second in a string of ringing endorsement projects. I think that it's fine as is. I agree with Ann that the arched header should be emulated over the new opening.
And Commissioner Devonshire?
I actually looked at that photograph and I thought, how thoughtful of them to align the head with the windows on the primary facade. I'm, I'm in favor of this. I have no problem with it the way it's applied for.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I agree with all the commissioners. It's approved.
They're all over the table.
He's not a politician, that guy.
Okay. So, I think you're supportive and perhaps maybe with some of the adjustments that have been mentioned. Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Appropriate as is.
Okay. So, I think we have many people who feel it's appropriate as is. But I think to get to six, we would want to include the modification that they look at doing the arch above the opening and choose so that it has a relationship to the rest of the fenestration pattern. So, Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you make that motion? Or did I start with you? I'm trying. Actually, did I start with you? I can't remember. Or yeah, Or yeah, why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
That's fine. We're approving the nine-foot height.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I think with the modification that you suggested.
Okay.
I have that in my mind.
Got it.
About the arch.
In the matter of LPC 21-01212, 424 Seventh Avenue, AKA 372-374, Fourteenth Street, in the Park Slope Historic District Extension. A Queen Anne-style flat building with doors designed by William H. Worth and built circa 1887. Application is to modify a masonry opening. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District Extension. I recommend approval with one modification, finding that the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant features of the building, that the modification to the masonry opening at the rear facade will only remove a limited amount of plain brickwork and will not substantially alter the character or solid-to-void ratio of the secondary facade, that the proposed black-finished multilight doors will be in keeping with the configuration of doors typically found as secondary facades at buildings of this type, style, and age, and will match the proposed finish of other fenestrations throughout the building, that only a portion of the doors will be visible from the public thoroughfare, thoroughfare over an existing fence, and that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District Extension, and I recommend that shallow arched headers be added above the door.
Okay, thank you. Rich, sorry, we need a second on this. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that?
Second.
All right, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, eleven in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Sarah?
All right, that's it, yes.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I tried to raise my hand before, in this particular instance, because they are removing bricks from the opening, and this, this is not hard Portland cement on these things, we could require, or at least suggest, that they reuse the brick from the opening in the arch above the window. We're talking about putting in a soldier course in an arch. They could use those reused salvaged bricks from the rear facade on that arch.
That's a great point. We'll ask them to do that. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, we're going to move to item number four. LPC 21-02939, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 591, lot 40, 49 Grove Street, AKA 49 to 53 Grove Street, 317 to 321 Bleeker Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is an apartment building designed by Hertor Brothers and built in 1889. The application is to reconstruct facades and install substitute materials.
And commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Please remember to unmute yourself. You can put on your camera as well, and state your name for the record, and may begin.
Sorry about that, couldn't find my, unmute.
Okay.
It's not allowing me to share screen.
And so you, you are actually controlling the presentation that's up currently? So you just have to click on it and then go ahead and...
Okay. I'll introduce myself first. I'm Christine Loach. I'm from EDG Architecture and Engineering. I'm the design applicant for this permit. So the building we're discussing is 49 Grove Street, and this is for an all-two facade restoration. So the building is located in the Greenwich Village District. It was built around late 1800s, actually 1889, so we're around 130 years old. The two facades we're discussing are two street elevations, one along Bleaker and one along Grove Street. Here's a picture of the corner of the building, looking at those two street facades. On the right-hand side here, you can see the typical ornament for the street facades. We have a lot of bluestone, both ornamental and some flat bandwork and sills, and we also have decorative cast stone bandwork as well. Here's some more views of the facade. So on the left-hand side, this is Bleaker Street. The right-hand side, we have Grove, again, showing the decorative ornament, typically ranges per floor, and it's repetitious on each floor, matching an ornament. And so the first item we'll speak about, which is under review, is the reconstruction portion of our permit, and this is mainly focused on the brick exterior width restoration. So this is just a photo of existing conditions. Our initial survey was performed via binoculars and fire escape access. So we do have full pipe scaffolding up now, which has allowed us to view conditions up close and hands-on. So these, these pictures here are the piers which flank either side of our existing windows. We're seeing a lot of movement in these piers. You can see the collar joint is open. What we found when we did remove this brickwork was that there are no masonry ties back to the existing structure, and also all headers, they're clipped headers, they don't actually penetrate back through into our masonry backup. Just showing you the underlying conditions I just discussed. You can see the clipped headers here in the left-hand photo. So it looks like a header from the exterior, but when we do expose those underlying conditions, they're not tying back to the masonry. Right-hand photo is showing the mortar has lost a lot of its cohesion properties, so we can basically remove this brick by hand. This photo here, it's just showing you the extent of deterioration for our exterior brick. We have a lot of spalling of the glaze going on, chips, cracks, crazing, and also our spandrel areas between those peer-to-piers we were just speaking about. We don't have very large spans. Our largest span is somewhere around 15 square feet in between ornament and the piers, but you could see the extent of deterioration is, is, be great. Moving on just to some close-up, so it is a mix of salvageable and unsalvageable brick that we have on the facade. So the left-hand photo is showing you that mix. The right-hand photo is a nice close-up of the typical unsalvageable brick, so crazing, chips, cracks. The headers you see here, they're also not real, we found during demo, so those don't go all the way through to the backup. They're not providing any type of stability. Further in-depth about our assessment on the brick, and a close-up just showing a nice square salvageable unit, and then showing a spold glaze unit, which we're saying is unsalvageable, units with cracks, we'd say those are unsalvageable as well, clipped headers, those as well can't be reused. So our basis for evaluating salvageable and unsalvageable brick will be based on aesthetics, and these are the parameters that we think could be put in motion for that evaluation. Moving on to just show some of those photos of underlying conditions. This is our backup masonry exposed. This, the isolated tan bricks that you see, those are the only headers that we're finding, so they're very sporadic. What we'll be doing in our new brick installations is properly pinning the masonry back to the building with helical ties and masonry anchors. We'll also be paring this wall smooth and installing waterproofing. There are water infiltration issues, which we'll be addressing with that repair. Some more underlying conditions, which is contributing to stability issues with the exterior brick. We found when we did demo some of the brick, there is abandoned chimney flues. So this is just showing a couple of those. We found these in those spandrel brick areas I discussed before. So we do need to infill these solid for stability. There is nothing for the exterior brick to attach to at these locations. So diagram of the extent of the brick replacement we're foreseeing. So it is 100% of our street elevations. What we are proposing in our application is to remove all brick and salvage those brick units that we have in our parameters as being salvageable. We'll discuss those parameters with the contractor, and EDG will also be involved in reviewing what the contractor set aside, and we'll reuse those salvaged bricks during reinstallation, along with new replacement bricks. These are some of the brick approvals we've already received from landmarks during this project, so we do have an LPC-approved mortar match. That's the top photo. The bottom photo here is our LPC-approved brick match. Just a detail showing a section and elevation of our brick replacements, putting in those helical pins to restore our connection of the face brick back to our structure, masonry brick ties. And we're also open to, if the salvageable brick, if you'd like that installed at lower floors for visibility, or we can mix our, our new and salvage brick together during the reinstillations. So we'll move on to our second item of discussion. This is regarding the substitute materials. As described, we do have a lot of bluestone at the property. So on the left-hand side here, you can see our highly ornamental bluestone, the extent of deterioration. On the right-hand side here, this is our less ornamental, kind of square, bandwork and sills, made in bluestone. A typical unsalvageable bluestone lintel is shown here on the left-hand side. This is providing structural support for the masonry opening, so we do want to replace that unit, make sure we have proper stability. And then on the right-hand side here is a salvageable unit, so we are salvaging where possible. We have a diagram later on to show that extent of salvaging. So here is our variation between using in-kind materials and our substitute material request. So for our highly decorative bluestone units, we're proposing replacement in precast replicas. And for our square bandwork and sills, we're proposing replacement in bluestones for those units. There are a couple of factors that go into that request. One is the replication process. In bluestone, to make the decorative units, they will have to be hand carved, so there will be an element of human error, and also a, a large time lag with getting our materials. We do have a contractor involved with this project already, and we've been told our lead time for hand carved units that we need is somewhere between six to eight months, just to get them on site. And then after that, we have our installation timeframe. There is also substantial increase in cost. We're looking at material costs alone, upwards of half a million dollars for the bluestone alone. We can also prefabricate into the precast units holes for our anchorage and get them fastened back to the building more securely. But we are able to get the square units for the bandwork and sills. Those can be cut easily to square size, and that is in our proposition. There's just some photos of already approved samples we have from landmarks. So on the left-hand side, that is our precast sample. So it's a pretty good match. We'll be replicating texture, color, and profile when we go back to match the existing ornament. And on the right-hand side here is our already approved bluestone replacement in kind. Here's the diagram I had mentioned before. So in gray, you can see our areas of proposed bluestone replacement in precast. So these are mainly at the second and fourth floor lintels, where we have 100% of those lintels being replaced in precast. There's some sporadic lintels throughout the other floors. There's four total that we have documented. Otherwise, the rest are to remain. The green bands that you see would be bluestone replacement in kind with bluestone. And here are just some section cuts of the details of these lintels, showing the anchorage, those anchor holes I spoke about, which are able to be preformed into a precast unit. As discussed, we can replicate in precast textures, profile, color, everything will match exactly. Also, with the precast, we're able to make molds of the existing units, and those will be utilized when we pour our new units. They will match exactly. What is it?
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? All right, we may, after we take testimony, we may have more questions. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, virtual hand, so we can identify you, and we will start with anyone who signed up in advance, and I will turn it over to Anthony to walk us through that testimony.
Thanks, Sarah. We do have a few people who signed up. I'm going to bring in Kelly Carroll first. And you should be in the meeting, Kelly.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. This presentation was spectacular, and the applicant made the case of why a facade reconstruction is necessary for this building. However, HTC found it strange that a photo from the 1950s, where the cornice is missing, was used as historic evidence, while the 1940 tax photo displaying the elaborate cornice was not furnished. The decades-long absence of the cornice invited water onto and into this facade, and it is the reason it has deteriorated. HTC strongly encourages that a replacement cornice be explored, which will protect and preserve the high quality of work being proposed here today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now I will bring in John. John, you should be in the meeting. You should unmute yourself. John, I've requested to unmute you, so you just have to accept.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society. When we reviewed this application, we were concerned that although the applicant had photos showing areas of brick that could be salvaged and areas of bluestone that could be salvaged, they didn't identify how much. I was very glad to hear the architect discuss this right now. I would like to also point out, though, they just identified that there are areas of cast stone, and there is no information about how much of the cast stone can be salvaged and reused. So we would ask them to work with staff to determine how much cast stone can be reused. We also note that the approved mortar color appears to be rather more gray than the adjacent historic mortar. We would expect a warmer or buff-colored mortar more closely matching the color of the brick. Finally, we hope that a restoration campaign of this magnitude would include replication of the missing cornice. Indeed, this proposal to rebuild the street facades may be the building's only chance to get back its cornice. The historic photograph provided, which can be known earlier than 1956, given that there's a '56 Chevy parked out in front, doesn't show it, but the 1939 tax photo does. Tenements of this era, and Hertor Brothers tenements in particular, are noted for their elaborate cornices. This building was not an exception. This would be a perfect opportunity to restore this feature in the original or substitute material. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else with their hands raised.
All right, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
Yes, we have received a resolution from Manhattan Community Board to recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let me turn back to the applicant. Would you like to respond to the testimony?
Yes, for specifically the cornice questions and comments, our application under review right now is limited to the parapet and... the parapet and below in this application. There is a separate, separate application with landmarks that's approved for the parapet work. And in that application, we are not installing a new cornice because the building wasn't designated with the cornice. It was designated without it. And we also, in that application, were able to salvage a lot of the cast stone. There's an extensive amount of ornament at that level as well that we were able to maintain. And we're replicating to match existing. So it will still be a very highly decorative parapet at the building at the street elevations. But that is under a separate application.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, for cast stone, we could get into those amounts if needed, but those will replicate in, in precast, which is closer to the material in kind than the bluestone we were discussing. But it's not as extensive as our, our bluestone replacements needed.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Holford Smith, do you have a question?
I'm just wondering if you tried any sort of consolidation treatments on the facade? So something that sort of helical pins from the exterior and fill to fill the, fill the voids in the backup wall. There, there are products out there that do that. I wonder if you've tried those.
So we would investigate that if it was possible to save larger areas of, of brickwork. What we're finding is the, the quality of the brickwork itself is, is what's damaged. That spooling glaze, you're seeing the cracks, the header issues. So if we had larger areas that were in, in good shape, we could pin those, but what we're finding is it's so sporadic. We'd have islands of little areas of brickwork to leave, kind of patchwork. So we did try to investigate that option and we were involved with LPC's engineer and retainer, old structures who got involved. And there were some letters that went back and forth in Zoom meetings. And between the two of us, we came to the conclusion, pinning wasn't an option. And it was actually an option that they proposed was this removal and salvage, which, which we are going with now.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Okay, if there are another questions, we will move to close the hearing.
There is one person raising their hand to testify, Sarah.
Okay, so we haven't closed the hearing, so we will allow this person to speak. So Anthony, will you move him in?
Yep. So I'm bringing in Doug. And you should be in the meeting now. Are you, you have to unmute yourself? So I've asked you to unmute. You should just be able to accept now. Okay. Should I just move him back into the attendee list?
Doug, if you are, can hear us, you have to accept our request to unmute you so that you can speak. Hit, hit the unmute on the, on your screen.
So I'll just, I will move him back.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, so we will go ahead and move to close the hearing. So Commissioner Luttrell, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And, and while there were comments about the cornice, I, I agree, this would be the ideal time to try to do a replacement cornice. However, as it's a separate component and not something that is being proposed, we can only strongly urge it or recommend it. We can't compel work beyond the scope. But, you know, I think to the extent that people agree, I think it's worth mentioning that we would encourage it. And so let's have a discussion on the replacement of the brick and the stone, the cast stone. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you start the discussion?
Sure. This is this is a forensic holiday, this building. This is amazing. Were, were I working on this project, the first thing I would ask for is Rylance tests to see how absorptive the bricks are, but having seen the photographs that they've shown, these are possibly the worst bricks I've ever seen in New York City. The, the, the glazing popping off these things makes me want to know who the manufacturer was, because these are just horrific. That the crazing that they showed is, is terminal. And it, you know, I, so in a, in a situation where, again, if we call for like the one this morning, you know, this, this building was constructed on the cusp of the introduction of, of Portland cement mortars in New York City. And so it looks like it may have been originally pointed in a High Lime cement, but it's been re-pointed with Portland cement mortar. So if they try to get that stuff off the bricks that are even salvageable, it's going to be just a nightmare. And so if, if I've ever seen a, a project that calls for 100% replacement of the brick with a brick to match, it's this one. So I don't have any problem with them replacing the brick. As far as the, as far as replacing ornamental bluestone with new ornamental bluestone, I think that the contractor telling them six to eight months is totally fantasy island. It would be more like a year to a year and a half. And so I think the, the approach going toward cast stone is, is perfectly reasonable. The, you know, the other thing about this, this brick facade is the, the mortar in the backup actually seemed to be relatively in good condition. So it hasn't been a situation where there's a lot of water getting in behind. It's, it's the fact that this thing was built terribly to begin with, with no through headers and with lousy brick. So I'm okay with removing all the brick. I'm okay with the, the cast stone that they're talking about. I think this is an approvable project as is.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Chen?
Well, I might disagree with Commissioner Devonshire.
Okay.
My wife does, why can't you?
All right, Commissioner Bland?
Well, I will say ditto, but I will also be a little cheeky and say maybe fabulous furniture designers, as the Herter Brothers were, needed a little more technical help when they designed a beautiful but flawed building.
You're bright, you, you got cheap.
Okay, and Commissioner Luttrell? So Commissioner Luttrell? Are you there? Any? Commissioner Luttrell?
I think she's away from her desk.
I see she's away. Yeah, okay. All right. So we'll move to Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree with my fellow commissioner.
Okay. And Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I was going to use Commissioner Chen's words about Commissioner Devonshire. Far be it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Sounds right. Provable.
All right, Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. I'm glad that they've done their, their homework and they've come to the right decision.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, and I had written in my preliminary notes, see what my Devonshire has to say. He that, he that as it may, I completely accept what he has said. And I want to say that I really would like to encourage them to replace the cornice, especially since because they can use all replacement fabric and they can use replacement for the bluestone in all the areas that they wanted to do, as he indicated would, would be preferable. I hope that they might consider doing a cornice, because I think it would be a great final piece for this beautiful building. And the fact it wasn't there during designation doesn't mean it does, it shouldn't be replaced. As we know, we have many, many buildings that have lost some features that we'd like to see again. So I, I hope they can think about that as a possibility as part of the restoration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum?
Amen to Michael and amen to the cornice.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Michael Devonshire. Commissioner Devonshire, would you make the motion? And we can encourage them to think about doing the cornice at this time.
And how much we saved then?
The, the cornice isn't just a decorative eyebrow. It actually does have a function on these things.
That's right.
In the matter of 49 Grove Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, an application to reconstruct facades and install substitute materials, I recommend approval, finding that the reconstruction of portions of the brickwork in the Bleecker Street and Grove Street facades is warranted due to their deteriorated conditions and will facilitate the incorporation of mechanical ties into the backup masonry. That the brick facades will be rebuilt to match their existing design dimensions, details and placement. That no expansion joints will be incorporated as part of the reconstruction work. That the replacement of some decorative bluestone units is warranted due to their deteriorated conditions and the replacement precast stone units will match the historic bluestone in terms of placement, dimensions, texture, finish, profiles and details. And that the new precast stone units will harmonize with the historic cast stone units throughout the building in terms of texture and finish. And the work will support the long-term preservation of the building. And the LPC recommends very strongly that the applicant consider reinstalling a replica cornice.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? All right, Rich, will you call the vote?
Derek Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you very much. And please continue to work with the staff as you move along in the project and we'll move to the next item.
Okay, the next item is number five, LPC 21-03133. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1066, lot 32, 400 West 57th Street, the Windermere Individual Landmark. This is an eclectic-style apartment complex designed by Theophilus G. Smith and built in 1880 to 81. The application is to alter the base of the building and replace storefronts.
And Commissioners, the have joined the hearing. Staff will be giving a brief introduction. Are you ready?
Good evening, Commissioners, Richard Lowery, Preservation Staff. The Windermere Building is an individual work, is located on the southwest corner of 9th Avenue and West 57th Street. In 2013, a proposal for new storefronts, windows, rooftop and rear additions and areaway alterations, as well as a modification of use for a hotel use was approved by the Commission. The applicants filed the construction drawings in 2017 and a certificate of appropriateness and modification of use were issued. Prior to the expiration of the certificate of appropriateness in 2019, most of the approved work had been completed except for work at the storefronts. The modification of use for the building is still in effect. Now, the proposal before you today seeks to approve the installation of storefront infill, modified from the previous approval to take account, to take into account historic conditions uncovered by the removal of the modern cladding and infill, as well as the installation of a low granite base at a portion of the 9th Avenue facade. The architect, Ilya Kristiakov of Ilya Kristiakov Architect P LLC, is here to present the proposal and answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to present to the Commission today. As, as I've been mentioned, my name is Ilya Kristiakov. I am a principal and owner of ICA Works and I'm pleased to walk you through the details of this project. And please let me know if you have any issues with, you know, hearing, hearing me through the microphone. So let me just skip to the next slide. Okay, one back, sorry. Yeah, so as, as I've been mentioning, this project is located at the southwest corner of 9th Avenue and West 57th Street in the Hell's Kitchen area of Manhattan. Again, as we discussed already, this building was built around 1881 by architect Tefero Smith and is one of, one, if not the only, the only, the oldest apartment building in the city of this magnitude. It was designated as a landmark in 2005. The architectural style of this building belongs to the Queen, Queen Anne era. And I just want to make a statement that this, the aim of this project, again, is to restore and to renovate the storefront level of this building based on the existing condition analysis and available historic information. And looking at these images, one can observe that this building went through a number of iterations over time. For example, we clearly see a cornice in image number two here. And actually, image number four, while it kind of disappears in a subsequent 1940 tax photo, image number one, to point some of those, some of those changes that had occurred. This slide will, will show you existing conditions as well as the scope of work area at the West 57th Street and 9th Avenue corner of the building. Please, please note the construction, construction activities along the West 57th Street under different application and unrelated to this particular proposal. You can see in some of those photographs. But our scope of area, every area of, you know, every area of work is predominantly within that large existing opening along at the 57th Street corner. Moving back. So this slide, this image shows the existing conditions and the scope of work area along the 9th Avenue, which is actually the longer and more, you know, and a larger, my thought is called work area with the purposes of this application. On the left, you see some of these existing condition photos showing the, you know, 9th Avenue elevation from the south, southern side and then from the, from the north as well. As well as the detail of the existing cast iron pilaster. This is an enlarged photo, again, of the, along the 9th Avenue within the scope of work area. And the following few slides that we're going to walk through, just kind of like do a little analysis of what we are observing here within existing conditions of the facade. So this slide kind of highlights the missing storefronts within the existing base as of, as we have it today. Please note the difference in header heights between each opening and as well as the difference in opening widths, which is what we are going to base our solution on. This image highlights the kind of assumed original locations of the, of the, of the wood cornice as a continuing along 9th Avenue. We can see that by the differentiation of the, of the brick, the quality of the brick between the face brick above and the, the common brick that's highlighted in this, in this photo, in this image. This image actually shows the, the missing, the missing brick pilaster that was assumed to have existed at some point and had, has disappeared over time. Actually, I missed this slide. I'm going to go back to the slide. So this slide shows the, the pattern and the, highlights the existing cast iron pilasters that are presently there. And the, the ones are in the southern portion of the building are there, but you don't see them because they're behind the boarding. So they are actually existing and they're being highlighted here. You can also see the highlighted on the, on the northern side of the building. You could see the, the existing cast iron column. You could see the, um, the existing cast iron column that is presently there, uh, as well. So we already reviewed that slide. Uh, and this slide kind of highlights the areas of the damaged or, uh, deteriorated brick that, uh, needs repair or replacement. Um, we're going to go over this in a bit more detail in the next few slides. So this actually is a, um, kind of a preview of, uh, what we aim to achieve in this project. It shows the, the final condition view along Ninth Avenue. Yeah, please note the, kind of the proposed new cornice and the storefront, uh, installed, installed based on the existing conditions along Ninth Avenue as we discussed. So you, you can notice that the slight irregularity in the heights and the width of the, you know, with the storefronts. Again, it's all going to be based on what we found during the existing condition analysis. This is a proposed elevation, um, official elevation, uh, kind of describing the work, um, proposed, uh, along Ninth Avenue. Again, uh, as being a restoration project, we based all of this work on, uh, and the proposed solution on available existing conditions and historic information. We, uh, as you can see that we are going to be installing new wood cornice, um, to match, uh, the pattern of the brick that we observed in the earlier photos. Uh, we're going to be installing new wooden glass storefronts, um, based on the storefront openings and, uh, available historic images that we, uh, we saw earlier. We're also going to be adding and repairing, uh, new stone base, uh, that is currently there, but it's, uh, fairly deteriorated. Uh, but it, you know, we could see that, we saw in the photos that, you know, based on what we saw, there was a, at some point, there was a stone base running along the corner of Ninth Avenue, West Fifty-seventh Street. We are going to, uh, uh, install this new fixed non-operational door that will, that will match the existing historic appearance, uh, as they, as based on the historic photos. Uh, we're going to be bringing back this wooden glass projecting bay window. We will be, you know, carrying that brick, uh, pilaster down to the ground, as I mentioned in the earlier photo. And we're going to be restoring that bolted brick arch that we've, we observed, uh, in the earlier photos, uh, in the historic images, we can go back to them, uh, that was once existed and, uh, served as a entrance to the lower level cellar. The, the, the brick, the brickwork and the keystone are currently there and will be restored, um, to, to match the existing, the historic condition. So in the following photos, in the following images, I wanted to go in and more enlarge, uh, certain, uh, conditions and, and describe them in more detail. So this is sort of a, this is a detailed elevation, uh, along the Ninth Avenue, showing the relationship between the projected bay window, um, based on the historic image on the right, to the core, to the cornice above and the new stone base, or actually the, the, I would call it restored stone, stone base and the existing masonry wall behind. So this is what we aim to achieve, uh, to really try to replicate the historic, historic floor on the right. This is another large facade detail, uh, along Ninth Avenue, um, showing that, as I mentioned, that bolted brick, uh, arch that, you know, you can clearly see in the historic image of nineteen oh five. And, uh, and, uh, we will be, uh, restoring that. It's actually currently there. It's just in a, in a really kind of, uh, dilapidated state. It, it needs, um, you know, we're going to need to, we will be, uh, using that existing, resurfacing that existing keystone, uh, with a limestone tinted stucco, and we will be, uh, adding new face brick to follow that, uh, brick pattern and as well as creating that, not, that shadow line reveal detail above. And additionally, we will be installing that new stone base to, to match, you know, historical original condition as well. So that's an enlarged, uh, detailed view of that. This slide, um, enlarges, um, a condition at West Fifty-seventh Street corner, um, corner of, uh, Ninth Avenue, West Fifty-seventh Street, at that, uh, another projecting storefront, uh, element that will be recessed from the, um, from the street. Slightly, the, the entrance will be recessed from the street, um, and it will be, it again shows the relationship of the cornice to the projected storefront and to the, to the existing column, to existing, uh, cast iron column. So this, I, this, this is shows you a, uh, kind of a, an overall plan of the project, pointing out all, uh, new work, uh, and existing work and kind of clearly showing that recessed, uh, store, uh, recessed doorway, uh, based on historic, historic conditions and new store, storefront, uh, wooden, wooden glass storefront, again, with this, with this existing opening. There is a level change, uh, that you can observe in this two, uh, elevation datums. We have a, uh, about twenty-five inches difference, uh, starting about here, which, uh, uh, kind of affects what's happening with that door. So this door effectively will be, as I had mentioned, non-operational, just for appearance only. Uh, moving on, so this, uh, this slide will, uh, just describes, uh, various, uh, conditions through the cornice and, uh, the, and, uh, and the wall below. So that would be a typical detail through the cast iron column, um, and the cornice above. Uh, this will be a detail, this will be a condition through the cornice, uh, at the wooden glass storefront. This will be at the cornice, at the, at the wooden glass window as per the elevation, and this will be through that fixed doorway, respectively. I believe, then, okay, so that would be, so that our next slide here will again kind of give a little preview of what the final as-built condition will, will look, will look like. We are again looking at, uh, new cornice, uh, new storefronts, that fixed door, uh, new projecting window on the west, on West Fifty-seventh Street corner as well as the Ninth Avenue corner, and the restored, uh, uh, brick arch with a new, new keystone. So that's, uh, that would, uh, kind of summarize the scope of work, uh, and, uh, provide a little preview to what we will want to achieve with this project. You know, our next slide, actually, I was, I think that's, that's about it. So thank you, uh, very much for your attention and, um, um, again, I can open, I can open any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. We do have one question so far. Commissioner Goldblum.
Yeah, in this rendering, the doors in the storefront are shown as being flush with the storefront to either side. But in the plan, the doors are shown as recessed. Should the door, if the doors are going to be recessed, which I assume is code, therefore is probably what you're going to do, is the transom going to be recessed as well or is it, is the transom going to be flush?
The doors are recessed, correct, per plan. Um, the transom will be flushed. We are going, we are just creating a, um, yeah, the doors will be recessed slightly off the, per code, yeah.
Right.
Six, six inches, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, not seeing any questions at this time. We'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Anthony to walk us through the testimony.
Yes, um, so we have some signups and the first person I'm going to call up is Kelly Carroll. Kelly, you should be in the meeting.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. This storefront restoration is clearly based on historic evidence and includes returning cornices to the ground floor of this building, which is laudable. One small suggestion is that the transom frames be reduced in thickness. And we ask that the cast iron piers meet the cornice at the southernmost bay, which currently it could, just could be a rendering error. Thank you very much.
And I will bring in John Graham. John, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
The Victorian Society of New York supports this proposal to restore the building's ground floor storefronts. We appreciate the careful research the applicants have done, but we have a couple of concerns with details that should be corrected in order for this proposal to be appropriate to this individual landmark. First, the transom bars and the transom windows framing appear oversized, resulting in glazed areas in the transoms that are much too small. Second, the southernmost storefront on Ninth Avenue incorporates two pilasters that don't reach the lintel. The applicant has just informed us that these pilasters are hidden by existing modern material, but that doesn't explain why the pilasters don't reach up to the underside of the cornice. We are also confused about what's being called the missing brick pilaster as the brick and stone pier just offset from this location looks historic in the available photograph. We think that the second display window south of the corner was projecting to match the first storefront on the other side of the door. This can be seen in photo four from nineteen oh five, board three, to the left of the door with the transom which proclaims that they sell white rose tea. Finally, if the brick infill at the arched former cellar entrance were carried down to grade without a stone base, it would better reflect the historic condition of this feature as an entrance. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. And we don't have anyone else with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board for recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'd like to turn to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to some of the comments made. I think they were primarily about some of the details, um, the framing details and the transom bars, the cast iron, I mean, the pilasters and how they engage the structural elements and the projecting window thought about the projecting window.
Uh, yeah, I would be happy to respond. Um, uh, I'd like to respond to the comment, uh, about the, uh, the cast iron columns and, and that they're not reaching the, 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 uh, the cornice. Actually, I want to go back to the, the slide, uh, that was highlighting existing conditions. As I had mentioned, um, uh, just, you know, we are working with existing conditions here and we need to, um, and, and based on that, we found that, um, effectively, uh, in order for us to, uh, to kind of maintain and, and, uh, hold the cornice dimension, um, uh, pretty much consistent across the Ninth Avenue elevation, we're having to, um, you know, we're having to follow the, the existing openings. And as you notice that, um, it, it's basically the relationship between existing openings and the, the dimension of the cornice. I want to try to, I want to find that slide. Uh, so what happens is that, um, the openings begin to step down as the, as we, as we, uh, you know, continue south along Ninth Avenue. And therefore, um, um, you know, the, our attempt to, uh, to kind of hold the, the cornice at a level, um, let's say we're going to, we're aligning it at the, and by the, we're aligning it with the top, at the top cornice. We are, we end up with the sort of like this dimensional difference, different, difference in the, from the bottom, from the underside of the cornice to where the cast iron columns stop. And that what you get, that would triggers that kind of dimensional discrepancy you see, uh, from the, from the underside of the cornice to the, uh, to the top of the cast iron column. So that is, again, that is created, uh, as you, actually, I'm going to go back to a couple more slides to really show you that, that drawing here. If you look at the area of work drawing on the right, you notice that, you know, the openings are, unfortunately, they're not, they're not at the same height. The headers don't align. And our cornice, uh, as I mentioned, holds, uh, sort of like holds at the, the bottom of the cornice is aligned with, uh, the northernmost bay. So that's why we end up with that, uh, sort of, um, you know, um, yeah, so that, that, that did difference. So our, our, our sort of, uh, solution to that is to create a, um, we will actually are trying to, we're going to use a wood fascia or wood detail to sort of mimic, mimic the storefront, uh, mim- mimic the cornice reaching the bottom of the, of the cast iron pilaster. And I want to show you that in a rendering. Or in the, I think rather in the, in the CAD drawing, in, in, in this elevation. So you see that, uh, while you can see that, yes, the, maybe the rendering was a little bit, uh, provided a little bit too much of a realistic view, but in the, in this elevation, you can see that the columns will stop at the cornice. It's just the cornice ends up getting, uh, significantly, uh, deeper, as it continues south, basically. So we're going to end up with a, with a flat wood, uh, wood fascia, which could actually be used for signage or, uh, some display, um, information about, about the, the unit behind the glass. So that, that's what actually triggers that. And that's, again, that's, that's based on existing conditions that we're having to work with here. So that's to respond to that comment. And regarding, uh, with regard to the new brick pilaster, um, I wasn't sure if I interpreted that. Uh, I'd like to actually go back to that question again. I, mine, um, I know that there was a reference to the historic images and I'd like to review that as well. I, my understanding is that it clearly, it clearly does, I mean, it, it clearly shows that there would be, it was a, um, at some point, there was, there was something coming down. There was a pilaster coming down to the ground at that, at that level. And we, and we are, I mean, I'm of the opinion, of, of the opinion that, that that should be restored and those horizontal decorative elements should actually be brought back. But I would like to review that again, um, with the commission. So, uh, were there any other questions? Uh, I just, I wanted to respond to all of them.
You're muted.
Sorry, unmuted.
Thank you very much. Um, the, there was a comment that the window to the left of the door, be, that it was historically projecting as the one to the right of the door was that you're replicating. Do you want to speak to that and what your research has found?
Sure. I mean, all, all, uh, our research is based on, again, on existing images and, uh, I would go back to that and, uh, take another look. We actually studied that, uh, during the design process and, uh, found that there was no evidence of that being projecting. While you, you could see that, I mean, I could zoom in and you could definitely see that, that, there is a, clearly, there, there, oh, sorry. The, there is a, you know, there's definitely a, a glass storefront here, a gla- a glass window, but one can hardly see that was projecting. I, you can see there was a, there was a, you know, there was a, a piece of masonry or a piece of exterior wall behind a glass, but whether it's projecting and how much we, it, it, it wasn't clear for me, uh, to me, uh, whether this was a truly projecting storefront as, as one, right? But I, I would be, uh, I would work with the commission to, to make that determination again. And actually, I wanted to, following that, I wanted to respond to another comment regarding the, uh, the width of the transom. And we are, this is, this is something that we could actually definitely work with and, uh, make, make a, make an adjustment based on the recommendation, uh, from the, from the, from the committee that, um, that the transoms, uh, could, could, uh, could get thinner and we could get more daylight, uh, than more grazing area. That, I think that's about common and we could, we could update that.
Okay.
It, it just, we were following existing historic images and as you see that, this, having this, this building having gone through these iterations, those, those, those historic storefronts are not, were not, uh, you know, in the historic images. So we were just working what we, we, we had. So that was that comment. And, uh, yeah, I'm happy to, um, respond to any other comments that there is.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any final questions or anything else we'd like the applicant to respond to? Okay, not seeing any questions. I think we'll move to close the hearing so we can begin our discussion. And I am starting to request to unmute all of you. So please go ahead and accept that. And, all right, Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Don't move.
Thank you. And Commissioner Devenshur, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And, you know, I think, um, this is, we've been working on this building for a very long time and I think it is very exciting that there has been, uh, a lot of work done and the ground floor here really is the remaining portion of it. Um, and we have, um, been working toward a sort of approach here that would be consistent with the special permit. Um, and so I think there have been good questions raised today and we should factor that into our discussion. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you? So Commissioner Lutti, would you like to start the discussion?
Sure. This is a great building and this is a wonderful project to, to really restore, restore the base of this building. Until two months ago, I lived in this neighborhood. And had this quite a bit. What it seems to be that the, the intent behind this project is to bring the base of the building back as closely as possible to what was there. But there seems to be, based on the presentation, the applicant feels that they didn't have a lot of historic information. And as a result, there's, there may be some inconsistencies in the design in terms of, you know, the windows and with the transom and where the columns meet. And I guess I feel that it, that the project needs some more consultation with the staff in order to ensure that these details are going to be executed properly. So I support the project, but I feel like it needs some, it needs some more refinement in order to get it right.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
This is an amazing analysis that they did. I think the issue for me is that interpretation, because of the, the limited historical photograph, there's a lot of interpretation and that has to be resolved with staff. It would take some time to kind of come to some agreement to the bay window, stick out, one go back. That type of historical interpretation would have to be studied. And I think, I think they're on their way. I think it's a very well thought through project so far.
Okay, great. And I think the staff can give them some guidance based on their experience of similar details. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I agree. I think they're in a, they're in a terrific place. I mean, you know, this is such wonderful work and such a great improvement in activating this corner. And if they work out the details, the staff, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm really in agreement with that. There's been a lot of work to date and, and it is a matter of kind of both refinement, but I think interpretation is the right word, especially for this corner where above it, half of it has those blind windows in it. And it's a little, you know, it's unusual. So it needs a little bit of interpretation beyond just the historic, you know, alignment with some kind of historic precedent. So just a little bit more work in with staff, I would be fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, this is a great building and it's, it's wonderful that it's being brought back after quite a bit of time. And I think the direction they're going in with their storefronts is, is great. And I'm finding to follow as much as they can of historic precedent. And I agree with other Commissioners that they should work with the staff to refine the details and get it as, as right as possible. And, you know, it's a good project.
Okay, great. Commissioner Goldblum?
Should I be yielding my time to Anne?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, please forgive me, Commissioner.
Please go ahead. It's okay. I don't have much to add. Honestly, everyone said pretty much the same thing, but I think it's, made a good start, I should say. And I think they do need to refine some details and, and maybe get out the magnifying glass to get even closer to it in those photos. But I think if they can work with staff, they can get this right.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum?
All I would add is that, that the staff in guiding the applicant who seems quite willing to follow their lead should resist the urge to perfect and follow the,
Okay. Yes, I agree. Commissioner Devonshire?
Some of the details that, that haven't made sense with this seem to point to the applicant, although they're doing a fine job, haven't really listened to the staff. We have the most remarkable staff on the planet. Listen to them and let them guide you.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with all the comments. The devil is in the details, but I'm glad that this project is finally going to get moved forward and reactivate the facade.
And Commissioner Bland?
Last and least, it's all been said, it's very appropriate, work with staff. I just wanted to say one thing though. It's great to have the Victorian Society weigh in now. They're here a lot and their testimony, I think, is superb and I just welcome them to the, to the table. And thank you for your testimony. It's really great stuff to hear.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've made it all the way around and we have a consensus of support, but to continue to work on the details with the staff. So Commissioner Lutti, would you make that motion?
Sure. In the matter of docket, twenty-one dash zero three one three three, four hundred West Fifty-seventh Street, Winnebago individual landmark, an eclectic style apartment complex designed by the applicant, G. Smith, and built in eighteen eighty-eighty-one. The application is to alter the base of the building and replace storefronts. Okay. So there's, oh. I recommend approval. With modifications finding that the work will not eliminate any significant architectural fabric or features that original masonry piers and wall segments and an original cast iron corner column at the ground floor will be retained and restored, that the configuration materials and finish of the proposed wood storefront infill featuring projecting elements, clear glass display windows with panel bulkheads and transom windows, clear glass doors with panel bases and transom windows, intermediate cast iron pilasters and a continuous bracketed cornice are based in part on historic photographs as well as other historic buildings of similar age type and style. The proposed storefront infill will help to reinforce a unified treatment of the building's base that the proposed granite base at the northern portion of the Ninth Avenue facade will provide a more durable condition that recalls the traditional use of granite at the base of buildings and will be harmonious with the brickwork above and that the work will enhance the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark. However, I found that the details of the proposed storefront infill do not sufficiently recall the historic. Therefore, I recommend that the applicants work with staff on refining the details of the storefront infill.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I shall second.
Thank you. Rich, will you call a vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eleven in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
And that's approved. Please continue to work with the staff and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is number six, LPC twenty-one dash zero four six zero four. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block eight forty-seven Lot one, One-eleven Fifth Avenue in the Ladies Mile Historic District. A neo-renaissance style store and office building designed by William Schickel and Company and built in eighteen ninety-four to ninety-five. The application is to modify an entrance to create barrier free access.
And Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please remember to unmute yourself and state your name for the record and you may begin. You now have control of the presentation.
Thank you. Michael Wetstone, Principal at Byrd Blinder Bell Architects, working on behalf of the owner of the building, Ben Winter of the Winter Organization. The building is a large commercial building in the Ladies Mile Historic District, Eleven Fifth Avenue, located on the northeastern corner of Eighteenth Street and Fifth Avenue, built in the eighteen nineties. It was built as actually a late addition to the Constable Department Store block, which occupies the north part of this block. These are historic photographs of the building, which has been really largely unchanged over the years. And our application has to do with providing accessible entrances into the retail store. So in this floor plan, you can see Eighteenth Street along the bottom, Fifth Avenue on the left. The, the building is mostly occupied on the ground floor by a large retail store, H and M, that actually occupies three floors, the basement and the second floor as well as the ground floor. There are two entrances directly into the store, one in the middle of the Eighteenth Street facade, one at the corner, and both of these entrances have steps. So the accessible route into the building, into the store right now is to go through the office entrance on Fifth Avenue, the office lobby and go through a back door. That is not suitable, so the owner wanted to provide some accessibility. Looking at the conditions with the steps, the way the sidewalk slopes, the difference between sidewalk and first floor is about seventeen inches on the corner, but it's only about eight and a half inches in the middle. And there's an opportunity there to do an accessible entrance with a minimal impact to the architecture. So we have focused on this entrance in the middle of the Eighteenth Street facade, which is the only location of work that's located, proposed. This is our photographs of the entrance as it is. As you can see, there's a recessed entrance with an ornate cast iron pediment and surround with wood transoms and side lights. There are two modern replacement doors, a very simple of wood with glass in the middle. And there are two cast iron steps. The cast iron steps, as you can see, were the kind with glass bullets in them. However, at some point, a sidewalk reconstruct, sidewalk vault reconstruction altered these steps so that there's no light shining through them. At the top of the page is a photograph from the bottom. There are concrete slabs and plates of metal below the steps, so light does not go down through them. And in fact, the, they're all painted at the same dark color. So on to our method for providing an accessible entrance here. This is a existing floor plan detail. You can see the two steps leading into the entrance and the double doors. So we're proposing to gain access with two methods. This is a demolition plan. So first, we will remove the two steps. We're going to salvage and reuse the top tread. We're going to cut into the floor to create a sloped area on the inside. And then we're also working with a civil engineer proposing to regrade the sidewalk to gain a couple of inches that way. So this is a proposed floor plan. You can see the slightly regraded sidewalk, you know, using DOT standards. The reinstalled top tread had just become a flush threshold. And then once you go inside, there's a gently sloped floor leading you up inside. But it's perhaps better explained in a sectional view. This is the existing section. You can see the two cast iron steps, very small, right in front. The steps are on top of this modern sidewalk vault construction. And then you can see the inside. We worked with our structural engineer, Silman, to do a core drill through this floor slab to understand what it's made out of. We found out that it is a terracotta art slab resting on the bottom flanges of steel beams that are about fifteen inches deep. And there are seven and a half inches of just cinder fill on top, which means that we are able to cut through inside, oops, sorry. We are able to remove some of the cinder fill so we can do our ramp. And the building has been very generous to us because with that seven and a half inches of fill, we don't need to make any structural modifications. So this is the proposed solution. The sidewalk can be slightly regraded, gains about three inches. The door threshold is lowered about five and a quarter inches. And then we have this gentle slope on the inside. And so the modification we are making is to lower the threshold and enlarge the, the door opening. Looking at it in elevation, on the left is the proposed removals. We would remove the doors, we would remove the steps. On the right is what's proposed. The dotted line indicates the current sidewalk grade. The heavier line right above it represents the new sidewalk grade. We would keep and support the existing storefront, which is quite ornate and complicated. We don't want to disturb it. We'd leave it exactly in place and just build a very simple five inch extension at the bottom to infill for to make up for the lowered threshold. And then the doors, we would replace with the doors that are identical, except they would be five inches taller. This is just a close up detail of what that extended base would look like. So on the left is a photograph, the cast iron and wood storefront. The ornate cast iron surrounds around the windows and doors are cast iron. The sashes and this, this panel on the left is actually made out of wood. You can see the cast iron step below painted. So in the new condition, we would support all this ornate work in place and just build a very simple base to fill in five inches lower. It would be painted the same color. We would do this out of hardwood such as oak. Staff recommended that we perhaps clad that with, with formed metal, so it's more durable. But in any case, it would all be painted the same color. It would just be a flat base extending one quarter inch beyond the original length that you see there. So it allows us to really leave the storefront intact and make a very subtle, small intrusion at the bottom to make up the difference in height. And then we would reinstall that tread that you can see here. These are details showing sections, working with a structural engineer. We provide a steel plate spanning these beams where the steps used to be. Reinstall that cast iron tread over a setting bed and some waterproof membrane. We would install this new base below the storefront. It's a section on the left. The section on the right just shows the door, the door threshold. And then this is our rendering. We would paint it the existing color. And the storefront would look really largely as it does now, except for this, I think, very subtle five inch extension at the bottom and the cast iron tread reinstalled. So that is the extent of the, of the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions? And I just do want to note that in the amended rules that we adopted in twenty nineteen, we allowed for a modification to existing doors to accommodate barrier free access. And if it included only dropping one step of cast iron and glass vault lights and incorporating it into the threshold, it would be eligible for staff level. So this is before us today because it's two steps and so it technically doesn't meet the rules for staff level. Okay, any, I don't see any questions, so why don't we move to public testimony? And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Anthony to walk us through the testimony.
Thanks. We do have one sign up, so I'm bringing in John Graham. John, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham of the Victorian Society of New York. The proposed alteration to the entrance will have a minimal effect on its design and proportions. And therefore, we feel the proposed design is appropriate. However, the loss of one of the two cast iron and glass stair treads seems unwarranted. Both should be retained in a flush configuration in order to preserve the historic material and the memory of the two-step entrance. Alternately, they could perhaps be relocated to the non-accessible corner entrance, which appears to have similar proportions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony? Rich?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you now.
Again, multiple buttons. We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Five recommending approval.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to turn back to the applicant. Michael, would you like to respond to the comments? We do also have some questions, but let's have your response first.
I'm sure we could, it could very well be possible to,
Oh, and I also,
Sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we could potentially certainly look at installing the two cast iron treads if that is something Commissioner,
Both of them flush, side by side, okay. All right. And I do want to just note for the record that Commissioner Bland is, recused on this item and has not been present for the meeting. Commissioner Jefferson, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, yeah, do you have a, would you have to add a handicap assist push bar for this door in the future?
No, we, we expect these to be manually operated doors that follow the, the rules for opening pressure. They're, they're not particularly large, large doors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other final questions? Okay, I am making a set to unmute you or request to unmute you as some of your. Yes, okay. So we, Commissioner Chapin, would you make, actually, no, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm muted.
And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And Commissioner Chapin, would you look at this one?
Yeah, sure. I I think that actually it's a very nice solution.
What happened? My one year's gone.
What was that?
Go ahead. You can go ahead.
We can hear you.
Okay. I think it's a nice solution and very appropriate. I think that the suggestion made about incorporating some more material possibly would is a nice one if they can do that without appropriately from a design perspective. And I I can approve this. I think it's a it's a good solution for the problem.
Okay, great. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree.
Okay, and Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree as well. Nicely done.
And Commissioner Chen?
Nicely done. Agree.
Okay, Commissioner Blant, oh, sorry, he's recused. Commissioner Lutfi?
Agree.
And Commissioner Jefferson? You're muted, so just accept my request to unmute.
Yes.
Yeah, well done. Project well done.
Okay. And Commission, Commissioner Shamir, sorry, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, agreed, appropriate.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I agree. This is appropriate.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I agree. Very good solution.
Okay, great. So I think the consensus is to approve and that it's a nice solution. And I think when you all were agreeing, you were also agreeing to the applicant considering saving both steps in the paving. So we'll ask them to do that as a modification. So Commissioner Chapin, would you make this motion?
Okay. In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness Borough of Manhattan, LPC twenty one zero four six, so zero four, one 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 Fifth Avenue Ladies Mile Historic District, a neo-renaissance style store and office building designed by William Schickel and company and built in eighteen ninety four to ninety five. Application is to modify an entrance to create barrier free access. I know that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the removal of the cast iron vault light steps will facilitate an upgrade entrance that one of the historic cast iron light steps will be incorporated into the proposed design at the threshold, thereby maintaining the presence of this significant feature in its historic location. If the extension of the base of this storefront is simply designed and will be finished to blend with the storefront, that the replacement stores will match the existing doors in terms of placement, materials, details and finish. And that we recommend that the applicant incorporate as much as possible of the cast iron vault light steps into the upgrade entrance. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
Or the Ladies, the Ladies Mile Historic District.
I'm sorry.
It might be a. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Who?
Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
I'll second it for either district.
Okay. It's virtually a call.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Great. That's, oops, thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
The next item is number seven, LPC twenty one dash zero four zero eight six. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block eight nineteen lot thirty nine, one twenty two Fifth Avenue in the Ladies Mile Historic District. A neo-renaissance style store and loft building designed by Robert Mayne and built in eighteen ninety nine to nineteen hundred. The application is to construct an addition on a vacant portion of the lot fronting West Seventeenth Street and to establish a master plan for storefront and entrance infill replacement.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please state your name for the record and you may begin. And just remember to unmute yourself.
Unmeeting, hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Erin Ruley for Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. I'm joined today by David Burns of Studios Architecture and Peter Tong and Nick Haynes of Bromley Companies. They are the owner and developer of this this project. I'm going to walk you through the history and context and then David will take you through the specifics of the design proposal. So here we have our site before us. It's one twenty two Fifth Avenue on the west side of Fifth Avenue between seventeenth and eighteenth streets. And as you can see here, it's T shaped, the building is T shaped in plan. So it has three discontiguous facades on seventeenth, eighteenth and Fifth Avenue. And, whoop, can we go back, David? Sorry. And adjacent to the park, adjacent to that seventeenth street wing of the building is a parking lot, which is the site of the new annex building that's proposed. That's nine West Seventeenth Street. As you might recall, the commission approved a two-story rooftop addition on this building a year or two ago. That addition covered most of the rooftop of the building. And so this addition, this proposal really seeks to redistribute that bulk in the form of a new annex building and sort of reconceive how that's used. And then the significant shift here is that the previous approval, between the previous approval and today, is that this engages and enhances the streetscape and the public experience of the of the the building. It fills a longstanding parking lot with a new fills the void of a parking lot and reestablishes the the historic storefronts on seventeenth and eighteenth streets. So next slide. So there are three components to the proposal. The lateral extension of the building at nine West Seventeenth Street that we see on the left, a small rooftop addition, this is one story plus a mechanical enclosure. This is non-visible. And then storefront modifications at Seventeenth Street, Eighteenth Street and Fifth Avenue, which will be part of a overall master plan to provide flexibility and sort of a unstable market at this time. The appropriateness of the proposal, Steven, is really rooted in a few fundamental ideas. First, that there is a long history of lateral expansions in this district of commercial buildings and and the department stores. And that the new building really draws on the historic vocabulary of the existing building, but interprets it in a very modern way. And then finally, it revitalizes these long shrouded projecting storefronts on the side streets and and reconnects that commercial activity between Fifth Avenue and the side streets. Next slide. And then just to dig into the history a bit. Here we see the the original footprint of the building and historic photograph from nineteen oh eight on the left. The building was originally constructed in eighteen ninety nine, designed by Robert Mayneke, who was prolific architect in the district. It is a ten-story neo-renaissance style store and loft building. And in the photograph, you see on the left, one twenty two Fifth Avenue, that's the Fifth Avenue facade. And then at the, oh, I'm sorry, on the right. And at the far left, you see that seventeenth street extension of of the building. And at the time it was originally constructed, it was surrounded by lower rise development. By nineteen oh five, the corner building was constructed. And we see that right there in that nineteen sixteen Sanborn. And you'll notice that the base was designed to mimic the base of one twenty two Fifth Avenue. So it creates this continuous composition of one twenty two Fifth Avenue, one twenty Fifth Avenue and the south wing of one twenty two on Seventeenth Street. We also see, can we just go back, sorry, David, the projecting storefront there in the distance on Seventeenth Street? And then also the buildings that previously were occupied the site of the the parking lot. Next slide. So previously on the the site of the parking lot were these two small-scale buildings originally designed by McKim, Mead and Wait for the Golep family. This was Golep family office building. And so the three-story building was designed, was constructed in eighteen eighty five. That one-story extension was added at some point between nineteen fifteen and nineteen thirty. And we see that footprint in the in the map on the right. Those buildings are demolished in nineteen fifteen and the site basically becomes the parking lot and as it remains today. Next slide. And here is the nineteen eighties tax photo showing this view looking directly north. So we're looking toward Eighteenth Street now, over the low-rise building fronting on to Eighteenth Street. And the map on the right shows the parking lot. Next slide. And similarly, the existing condition today. So on the left, we see the void in the streetscape that the parking lot creates. And you can also get that initial view of the the seventeenth street wing of one twenty two, where the projecting storefronts have been shrouded. And and then looking on the view north on from West Seventeenth Street through the parking lot on to Eighteenth Street. Next slide. And then just to sort of walk around the building, Fifth Avenue, there are three primary facades for the building. Fifth Avenue is entirely clad in limestone. There are, it's articulated by three monumental arches atop this three-story rusticated base. And that's all crowned by an attic story and a cornice. As we turn the side streets, that vocabulary is extended. It's the three monumental arches. But here, because the facades are slightly narrower, they're, the the arches are compressed slightly. And we see a material change. So the base is limestone. And then as we get to the upper stories, it transitions to a buff brick and terracotta facade. You'll also notice that on Seventeenth Street, which is even narrower than Eighteenth Street, there's a slight plainer shift. There's a setback in that westernmost bay of the building. Next slide. And this is just a general overview of the storefronts. As we get into the storefront section, we'll be looking at some probe details and more existing conditions, but general overview. Fifth Avenue, the the central bay is the primary entry to the building. And then that is flanked by two storefronts. And all of this infill and and the framing itself as well, there's no historic fabric left at all within those bays. It's fairly recent, within the last fifteen to twenty years. Everything has been commission-approved and replaced. The original fabric didn't exist at the time of designation. And then on Seventeenth and Eighteenth Streets, we see the existing condition. These have been clad over in stucco. The conditions vary. They both retain their historic cornice. But then the conditions below are slightly different. Seventeenth Street has its transom, Eighteenth Street has its bulkhead. But they both have been sort of backdoored for for mechanical and and freight use. And so this is a real opportunity to reinstate that that life to those bays. Next slide. And so here's how we see that existing composition. One twenty two at the right, one twenty at the corner. And then the south wing of of one twenty two with its projecting bay on the left and the the parking lot beyond. But historically, this this was constructed as a as an overall composition, and that's how it reads today. And this is very much in keeping with the the history of the district, which has an extensive body of lateral expansions. And those expansions to the commercial buildings, it impacted the department stores, the mercantile buildings. And there were always obvious differences between the buildings. They didn't always seamlessly merge. And so we look at this today and think about how the new building might fit into the streetscape. Next slide. And then just to look more closely at the existing lateral expansions in the district, three examples of commercial buildings that were expanded. These were, we thought were particularly interesting because they they use the vocabulary of the historic, of the original building and but interpret it in a slightly different way and by the individual authors. And so on the left and the areas that are marked by the arrows are the expansions. So East Twenty First Street, Daniel Burnham expanded the existing building. That's basically doubling the size of the building in nineteen oh five, slightly different vocabulary. Eighteen eighty, eight eighty Broadway, the in the distance, we see a nine-story annex constructed as part of that building. The original building at was six stories. And then one forty one Fifth Avenue, which was actually originally constructed as an L-shaped building. And then that corner piece was the was the later addition. So really creating a frontus piece for for the new building. Next slide. And then that context is overlaid with how the district has how new buildings in the district have really addressed similar sites. So narrow sites that maintain the street wall and act as connective tissue in the in the streetscape. And this really, these are three commission-approved examples, all within the immediate context on Seventeenth and Eighteenth Streets. And this really illustrates the range of contextual to something more assertively modern with thirty eight West Eighteenth Street. And from there, I'll pass it to David to walk you through the specifics of the design.
This gives you an overview. As Erin mentioned, the lot is T-shaped. This gives you an overview of the project, showing the extension of the annex and filling in the parking lot. It also shows the rooftop pavilion. And last, we'll talk about the storefronts and we'll go through in in that order. Starting just as a point of orientation, the plan on the left is an existing plan. You see the void, the thirty eight by roughly a hundred feet is the parking lot today. The current entrance to the building is off of Fifth Avenue. You'll note the 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 center entry on Fifth Avenue, the distance from the front door to the first elevator, and the building is is under-elevated. So one of the main drivers of this project is to reorient that and pull the primary office use entrance off of the side street to offer better vertical transportation in the building and free up the Fifth Avenue frontage from a planning perspective in the building to be more amenable. You'll also note the kind of the potential for retail. I think that is something we'll come back to is an uncertainty as to how the retail demising might happen. So when we get into the storefront options, we will talk about what it means as to where doors may want to go in the future. And we've built in some optionality. We're going to start with the the annex facade. This is really a contemporary infill building that is taking a lot of its cues from the existing one twenty facade. As Erin mentioned, the existing facade is limestone with brick above on the side streets. And kind of what does that mean for our new building? But we do want this to be a kind of a point in a timeline and a clearly kind of statement about the building and its and the prosperity of the building and bringing new life to the block by infilling the the parking lot. And so some of the pieces that we're referencing are that base expression and carrying that base expression through to the new building in its double-height expression of a entry point, as well as the punched openings above that in the third story. So there's a three-story expression with a double height, double-story expression of of an opening. Then the kind of vertical bays or piers of the building and carrying that across to the the new building and the annex. Obviously, there's a floor alignment because these buildings are basically, it's an expansion of laterally expansion of the one twenty two building. And picking up on cues of the existing building of that ninth floor that has the arch top window and carrying that into the new building and an attic story, again, that also differentiates itself from the floors below. We'll go through these in a little bit more detail. First, we'll talk about materiality, mentioning previously the the rusticated limestone base and buff brick with slight iron spotting above in the primary kind of shaft of the building. And then the lot line brick. And then the lot line brick, the metalwork, all being of the same kind of tone and painted cast iron and looking at those tones and pulling that into the metalwork of the proposal. So as we look at the overall elevation and kind of carrying those materials over, we are looking at a base. And we're looking at that in in cast stone to better help us kind of calibrate tonality to be matching of existing. And then brick above that, I think another thing we'll talk about when we get into the detailing is the depth of the facade. Aaron mentioned this facade has a break in the historic facade where it steps back about three feet in the leftmost bay. And we are aligning with that three feet back from our property line. But we are still interested in building that depth in the facade. So at the base, you'll see approximately a three foot recess for our entry to again build further kind of shadow into the building. And then the windows themselves also build in a foot of recess where we have the opportunity to turn the stone in at a chamfer or step the brick up in the shaft of the building. And we'll go through that a little bit more in detail in each section. From the bottom, we'll start at the bottom and kind of work our way up. This is a view obviously from Seventeenth Street looking up. That three story base is mentioned before, a double height glazed opening, kind of spandrel condition in metal that would support our marquee. And then three punched openings over top of that, all lining with the bays above, but clearly part of the base of the building, again, borrowing from the existing building. But also in in the neighborhood itself and and looking at those three story expressions with two story glazed volumes and kind of metalwork that are then underneath of punched openings and kind of that language that happens throughout the district on side streets. So as we work our way up, we'll 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 show an illustration and then some plan and section information. And we'll get into a little bit more detail in each section. This is at the entry point, the plan at the bottom right, showing that three foot recess, our new entry doors and the chamfer of the stone. So you see that that stone turning inward, building in that depth. And you also start to see the metalwork. And again, the metalwork is intended to offset glass from 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 stone and masonry, where we have an opportunity to to add a little bit more weight to the base of the building before we 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 hit the glass. So those profiles appear at the perimeter as well as a decorative cap at the mullions. So as we work our way to the second floor, which is also incorporated in that same volume, we can see that three foot recess and chamfer back out to the facade before we hit our punched window up above. Again, the detail through that, the section detail on the right, before we hit the third floor window and the top right. And then the metalwork of the marquee, which we'll come back to after we get through the rest of the facade before moving on to the rooftop. The third floor, the recess is pushed back a foot. So again, still carrying a substantial amount of shadow and depth in the facade. And you see the three kind of windows, punched windows over top of that two story base. And this is still in the cast stone material before we then transition to brick up above. We are adding a heavier silk course at the fourth floor window line that helps us kind of announce that base condition. While it's not the historic cornice, it is a a clean marker and a simple way of indicating a the three story base and transitioning to the maze to the brick above. So as we transition to the brick, we see the stepping in plan that you see in the the bottom right. And then you see the the arch top openings happening at the ninth floor that also then has the stepping turning in section as it turns the arch. And the plan details of that, again, a foot in depth before we hit our our glass line from our from our brick facade. And the very top at the kind of attic story, subtle differences here. We extend again that that silk horse as a larger element than the typical sills in the shaft of the building. We changed the bond pattern to a Flemish bond at the very top of house. And the the stepping then again reappears in plan. And you also see the cornice interpretation of the cornice in a simpler form than the than the existing one twenty cornice. So on the bottom left, you see that ninth floor head condition of our windows and stepping in the arch. And then the the cornice condition on the right hand side as it hits the head of the window of the tenth floor. So here, we're going to jump back down to the sidewalk and we'll talk a little bit. Aaron mentioned a couple of precedents on on buildings. And we just wanted to touch on a couple for canopies and marquees and and looking at that condition on the side street. Because it is an important element for such a large development to have something that signifies entry and looking at other precedents in the district. And going back to eight eighty Broadway that had that annex that was added and also at at a certain point, a fairly extensive canopy around sixty feet long off of the side street. That was both part of the annex and part of the original facade of the building. And looking at, you know, how does that relate to our proportions when we think of both one twenty-two, which is a T shape, and then one twenty-fifth Avenue where the bases were considered as kind of one architecture? And looking at the appropriateness of that that extension of a of a marquee, so we have a signifier of entry off of the side street. So that bottom left image indicating that. And given the overall length of the facade, we feel like that that twenty twenty-four or so feet of of marquee feels appropriate to the scale of the building. So the view from Seventeenth Street looking back, you start to see the development of that detail of the bay window in the historic restoration of this, which we'll get into in the storefront master plan, starts to influence our thinking about the the marquee itself and looking at the detailing and rounding and easing of edges to play with the metalwork of the historic facade. And the section through there, the section looking back to the east, you see the overall depth of the facade stepped back three feet. We're already back three feet from our property line. From here, we're going to jump quickly to the roof. This is, as Aaron expressed, a smaller rooftop pavilion than what was previously illustrated. One story pavilion and elevator overrun and bulkhead, mechanical enclosure and outdoor paving. So from a couple of vantage points, you do see the back of the annex from Eighteenth Street. We'll show that in the visibility studies, which is the elevator core. In plan, the pavilion, the interior of the pavilion, the the bold magenta marks are where the mockup was built to illustrate whether things were visible, which they're not. And the core, and you can see the annex portion outside of the previous footprint, which is the bold dashed line. So elevations from the south, looking at that pavilion, at a one story pavilion and a section through that pavilion, again, mechanical enclosure in the kind of T shape that reaches out toward Fifth Avenue. This is the mockup that was built. Again, the the magenta markers are where they were built. And very quickly, mockup not visible from the various locations. So from Eighteenth Street, we do see over our neighbor to the north, the lot line condition and the intent here is to pull the lot line material from one twenty-two into the core wall of the elevator elevator core running up this facade. So from here, we're going to jump back to the street and we'll talk through the storefront master plan. The, we're basically talking about three areas as the three facades of the building. We are going to talk about a little bit of optionality. On Seventeenth Street, we're not proposing any options. We're hemmed in by our Con Ed and vaults that they are proposing for the development of this project. It really restricts us to one entrance off of Seventeenth Street. So this is more or less the only option that would be part of the master plan, an entrance into the historic bay of the storefront. On Eighteenth Street, we'll look at some optionality where there may may or may not be, want to be a bit a door in the historic bay, depending on retail leasing. We do have a couple of other doors that we can activate on that facade. And then Fifth Avenue, we'll look at some optionality. The center would always be an entrance bay with doors. And then the two flanking bays, north and south, would have the optionality of a storefront or door, depending on how the frontage is leased. A little bit back into the timeline, as Aaron mentioned before, the projecting bay window that we see in nineteen oh eight. The original drawings show a a bay window with no openings in it. Nineteen oh eight, that was modified to create entrance points off of Seventeenth Street. Then back in nineteen twenty-one, it looks like it was restored to a storefront only with no openings to the current condition, various degrees of protection with the mechanical louvers, but also underneath of some of this material has been kind of shrouded, the historic material. We have some pros to show. We also wanted to look at the precedent of just inserting doors in a in a decorative bay. Since the building historically had that at one point, how can we best do that to be sympathetic to the bay window? And looking at the conditions of Seventeenth versus Eighteenth, Eighteenth has has more historic material for restoration. Seventeenth has a little bit more challenges where some of the elements were left more exposed and therefore a little bit more susceptible. The bulkhead had been clad over, but for reasons where the the bulkhead had drastically deteriorated at the base. Whereas on Eighteenth Street, you see that bulkhead more or less intact and already been restored. And the mullions themselves have been covered over on the exterior, better preserving their their condition. Some probe photos showing Seventeenth Street where some of the damages under that metal cladding of the bulkhead. So we see where the metalwork of the bulkhead underneath has kind of rusted out and failing at the very base. You also see some of the construction where the metalwork simply doesn't exist. You see the masonry kind of rubble as well as as well as some of the structural elements. And then some of the mullion conditions. So our intent is restoration wherever possible and recreation of decorative mullion caps and framing where necessary. As Aaron mentioned, the the cornice of both seems to be in reasonable shape and to be prepped for restoration work. So existing storefront at the top proposed at the bottom. This shows our new proposed door on on Seventeenth Street. Again, we would be keeping the transom condition. We'd be keeping wherever we can historic material and recreating where necessary. We are creating a recess for our doors to be pulled back the required distance from the sidewalk, so we're not swinging our doors into the sidewalk, which results in this center kind of two bays aligning with the transom above to be pulled back. It is offset because there is a column offset in the structure beyond. The rest is restoration of historic doors that have disappeared over time. There's existing material above in the transom of the service door. We'd be restoring the doors below, but actually fixing them as not an access point or an egress point. And then the ten panel doors similarly, where doors have been placed over the years, we would be restoring that and they would be fixed panels. In plan, existing above and proposed below, we see that recess of our of our new doors, how they miss the existing columns. This is the step in the facade of the building. But we thought it was important to align these points with our transom above since there's historic material there. And the panels to the right being fixed where there historically were doors. And you see the reference to the Con Ed vaults, which is kind of critical for us because we need that clear path from our doorway. We'll go through some plan details of the storefront first at the bulkhead. You see a recreation of the panels to match as we recess back for our new door. And then you'll also see on the right hand, upper right hand side, the historic material of the mullion cap that's being preserved and a new aluminum mullion behind that to align with the the mullion cap, new insulated glazing units throughout. Where we step back, we will have a corner condition with a new cast panel to match the mullion caps of the historic mullions. And sections through that storefront at the recess of the doors. The transom continues at the at the plane of where it is today. The door gets set back through the storefront itself and then through the doors immediately to the east. And then that again in detail. So we see a new bulkhead that's been largely reconstructed because of the damage that's there today with the recess of our of our glazing in that eighteen inch kind of niche for our doors. The historic mullion that's horizontal at the bottom of the transom is retained. And sorry, and then new windows above to match the profiles of the wood, which have deteriorated. So these would be aluminum above, just above the decorative horizontal mullion cap of the transom. There is a ledge here for new signage that would happen above that detail. Some so from below, you would still see that mullion detail from the street. And that the bulkhead as well, where we're replacing material to match existing. The view from the south looking north. Eighteenth Street is largely the same except there's more material here to restore in better condition. Here, we also have the optionality of a door or potentially not a door. So there would be an option where this would just be a straight restoration to a bay window if the leasing of the retail doesn't necessitate this door. The other two doors can remain active because while we have services on the side, we don't have Con Ed vaults that limit our door locations. And the plans of that and very similar conditions as to Seventeenth Street and similar detail conditions of the return of the bulkhead where we're adding doors and the view looking again, south from Eighteenth Street. From here, we'll jump to Fifth Avenue and looking at a timeline of an illustration to nineteen oh eight, where we see the kind of more historic condition of the storefronts that has disappeared over the years. Jump to nineteen forty and then even up to nineteen sixty-two, where we see a lot of the entry detail has been removed. And then the restoration work that we see after the nineteen eighty photo of the entryway, the two flanking storefronts and the center also not nonhistoric. The current condition today is a very simple kind of framing solution, not much detail in the in the in the system itself. You can see kind of the butt glazed doors with the with the bottom shoe and top shoe and a very minimal mullion at the base of the storefront. So our proposal is to bring a little bit more weight to the storefronts along Fifth Avenue. Again, the center bay would always be retained as a door. We would have a a bulkhead at the base that would bring some of the detail from the bay windows on the side street. We'd also introduce a transom with additional divided lights to the again, reference the transom on seventeen to eighteen streets. And additionally, that U channel around the edge that again provides a little bit more weight to the storefront. The north and south most bay would be options, depending on the lead, the retail leasing. The base option could be a storefront, but offering options for a justified door or a center door if this big becomes leased into multiple parcels. And just for clarity, this is a miss, there would be the same detail on all the bulkheads. So this bay would also have the same detail. We'll get into that in a section in a second. The existing plan up above, the proposed plan. Again, the center bay stays doors. You see that additional depth, what you saw from the side entrance of a of a larger U channel to separate the masonry from the storefront. And again, a decorative cap on the mullion that also provides a little bit more detail in these storefronts. And in section, section through the new double door with potentially a louver if necessary or glass and the bulkhead that's been enlarged to about a foot. So we see that bulkhead at the base on the bottom left here, where we have similar vocabulary from the side street. And then we we move to the pressure cap with the U channel that would provide that extra detail. A similar ledge above the mullion at the transom point that would provide support for signage and lighting from the face. And then again, that condition at the very head condition of the storefront. And the view, one thing I neglected to mention is that there are currently, or there were at one point in time, various flagpoles in the building. And so historically, there was flagpoles on the southernmost bay, on the middle bay and on the northernmost bay. We are looking to reinstate the flagpoles on the northern and southernmost bay, leaving the center bay free of flagpoles. That's what is illustrated in this in this view here. So pulling back again in context, you see it in its entirety.
All right. Thank you. And I think we have some questions. Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
Okay, just on your storefronts on Fifth Avenue. You have louvers there that I didn't notice in the other storefront proposals. It, does the gap have louvers now? Do you, is there a way to avoid the louvers?
The gap does not have louvers now. It's possible that we could avoid the louvers. I think it's a question of flexibility in the future. If it gets divided into three small users, providing the proper air intake. You know, if there's a vent requirement that this could come up in the future, which is why we're proposing it now. I think our hope is that it's all remains glass, but in order to provide future flexibility and not knowing where the retail leasing may go, that we wanted to allow for this flexibility.
There's no fresh air access now that could be through the back or in some other way.
Because gap is such a huge user, it does come in through other parts of the building, through the bay windows that you noticed on the side streets. So if it is another big user like that, it's fair that we could pull it from different parts of the building, you know, down through the building. But if it's a lot of smaller users, it's more likely that it would want to come through the facade. And if it's direct venting of certain things, it may want to come through the facade.
All right, any other questions, Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I would like to go back to the marquee. Does the marquee stick out as far, how far does it stick out in front of the from the existing building out? Not from the new building, from the existing that they have.
I'll jump back to that section. It jumps out, so we're three feet back from the property line, but it, from the existing building facade, it is thirteen feet. Which gets us to our two feet from the curb, which is the regulations for a marquee. Apologies for jumping. So a total of thirteen feet off of the existing building facade.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, I don't see any other questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony and we have more questions after that. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. We will start with any signed up in advance and I will turn it over to Anthony to walk us through that testimony.
Thanks, Sarah. We do have a few people who signed up. I'm going to call Jennifer Falk first. Jennifer, you should be in the meeting, so just state your name for the record. Jennifer, you have to unmute yourself if you haven't yet.
Oh, there I go.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the Bromley Companies' proposed expansion of their location at one twenty-two Fifth Avenue. We think this is a wonderful new addition to the neighborhood. We are encouraged to see that the addition will have no visible impact from street level on Fifth Avenue and is only minimally visible from West Seventeenth Street and West Eighteenth Streets, given the proposed setbacks. The proposal reflects the Bromley Companies' overall commitment to providing best-in-class modern office spaces for their tenants. And while these are very challenging times, we believe that the additional square footage generated through the project will create wonderful, exciting new opportunities for new businesses to make the Union Square Fourteenth Street community their home. Lastly, I just want to mention that the Bromley Companies have a track record of being a thoughtful neighborhood partner. They've been actively involved with community affairs to improve the surrounding community for over forty years as not only property owners and business leaders, but also as a neighborhood resident. We thank you very much for the careful consideration of this proposal and we urge the commission to approve it. Thank you.
And if you could just state your name for the record.
Sure, Jennifer Falk. I'm with the Union Square Partnership, I'm the Executive Director.
Thank you so much. The next up, I will bring in Kelly Carroll. Kelly, you should be able to speak.
Yes, thank you. Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. Categorizing this new construction as an addition is perhaps why its design appears a bit shy. HGC would like to see the structure fully read as a separate building and take its place on Seventeenth Street. A suggestion to strengthen this design would be to robustly emphasize the horizontal elements in the base of the building as is typical of its neighbor and other buildings of this scale in the ladies mile. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will now bring in John Graham. John, you're in the meeting and if you could just state your name for the record. John, I believe you're muted.
Yes?
Now we can hear you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. The VSNY would like to comment on two aspects of this proposal. The construction of addition on the Seventeenth Street side and a master plan for storefronts on the Seventeenth, Eighteenth and Fifth Avenue facades of this historic building. I'll break my comments into two parts. Applicants proposing additions to landmarks are usually urged to defer to the historic buildings. And this proposal does this well in terms of height, cornice line, window opening locations and the alignment of floor levels. But in terms of details, the proposal seems just too respectful. It looks as if someone had used a power wash to scrub away all the original texture in detail, leaving a very bland facade in its place. It's also hard to see a structure which is thirty-eight feet wide and ten stories tall as just an appendage. The VSNY recommends that the applicant treat this building less like an addition and more like a new building within the district and re-study the design of the street wall to create a facade with greater depth and texture, which is both respectful of the adjacent landmark and a positive addition to the district. Concerning the storefront master plan, the applicants were fortunate to locate so many historic photographs showing the original proportions of the bulkheads and the display windows. It's unusual to have different bulkhead heights on the three different facades, but that appears to be what we have here. They were also lucky to uncover so much of the historic detail which had been concealed over the years. But VSNY was unable to determine from the drawings how the different storefront designs are being modified with custom cast aluminum mullion caps. And where and how much of this new material is proposed. We think it's important that the different historic storefront designs be respected and that replacement elements be correct for each design. In all other respects, the proposal is very appropriate. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Five which recommended denial unless the protrusion of the canopy is drastically reduced and the flagpoles are removed from the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to turn back to the applicants and see, I'd like to respond to the sort of the philosophical approach to the annex and then some of the detail comments, particularly about the canopy and the flagpoles.
David, do you want to go ahead and I'll follow up?
Yeah, I'll talk about the just facade design. We did study a wide range of potential ideas here and and as far as, you know, something that's drastically different from the existing. I think the reality of this is because it is an annex, we are looking to tell a story of a new building, but it has a relationship to the larger whole. You know, it's only thirty-eight feet in width. So as a standalone building, it could read by itself, but I think as part of a story of the larger development of the building, it was important to ownership that it was part of the historic design. So there are moments of material references, but clearly stating a modern statement about the building and where it's going. So I think the, it was intentional, you know, streamlined detailing protocol to really simplify things down to their essence. But still using, you know, craft and material in ways that we think will help elevate the experience and relate it to what's there without being a direct replica. Aaron, do you want to touch on the storefront questions?
Sure, I would also sort of amplify the idea of the expansion of the building where it's, there's beauty in the plenary of it. And, you know, historic buildings, we see so much projection and depth given beyond the plane of the facade. But here really, we're able to explore that, the space behind the facade. Because one, things are limited by code. So often we see things hemmed in by restrictions on overhangs. But there is significant depth and texture created with the recess of that central bay at the base of the building and then within each of those windows. And it's carefully detailed so that there is depth and shadow and lots of texture in it. And I think the storefront is the idea behind the storefront, and we can go back to the probes a bit, but the idea is to preserve whatever is salvageable. On Seventeenth Street, the entire bulkhead has to be recast, we're assuming. So that's all new fabric at the bulkhead. The mullions will be retained to the greatest degree possible. And on Eighteenth Street, it would mean modifying the bulkhead, but retaining all of the historic mullions. And there's no historic fabric that remains as we stated previously on Fifth Avenue. But there, the bulkheads were historically much lower because of the grade changes. And so we're replicating that height and simplifying the overall proposal so that there's this clear distinction between old and new fabric and sort of an understanding of the planer shifts within the storefronts and the building itself. And I think, oh, do we want to deal, we need to deal with the canopy as well. And so David, do you want to?
Yeah, so we did, you know, we went back and looked at the overall size. And I think the reality of that last view is when you do look at the frontage of one twenty-two and one twenty together, the amount of visibility and the projection is pretty minimal from the corner. And so that we think is critical to the project of, you know, being able to pull people down to the side street while not, you know, being overwhelming to the development or the building. So I think since our community board meeting, I think some of our illustrations may have been a little bit deceptive. And I think, you know, you see it in elevation here, the amount of projection off of the side street feels very minimal. You know, at roughly ten feet from our property line, given the bulk of the building. So I think the overall proportion feels right and the thirty-eight feet, we're about twenty-four feet within that. But overall, between our building and one twenty-two and one twenty, it feels appropriate to us. Aaron, do you want to touch on the flagpoles?
And yeah, on the, maybe on the marquee too, which is, you know, as we went through those examples, pretty consistent with what existed historically on buildings of this scale when you think about it compositionally. And then also, there's this lovely interplay of ins and outs at the facade. So starting with the main building facade plane and then the setback in the facade, but then the projecting storefront and how the new building engages that. So, you know, we're setting back at the ground floor and then that the canopy, the marquee projects out. But there's a lovely rhythm that happens between those bays along Seventeenth Street. And then the flagpoles, of course, there's a historic precedent for the flagpoles. These were intended to sort of mark Fifth Avenue, realizing that we are transitioning the primary entry to Seventeenth Street, to the side street, to really create new storefronts, a new overall appearance for Fifth Avenue that gave it the prominence that it deserved and for the historic role that it played.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, I am starting to unmute and request to unmute you so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion on this item. So Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearings?
I moved.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion and just just remember that there are three components to this application. There is the annex building that is being proposed on Seventeenth Street. There is a rooftop pavilion, which is not visible from a public thoroughfare, but doesn't meet staff level rules because it exceeds the maximum height staff can approve for a visible addition. And it also sits partially on the annex. And then there is the storefront master plan on all three facades, which in many cases replaces nonhistoric infill. There is a modification to historic infill on Eighteenth Street. So there's lots of components and we'll try to cover all of them in our comments. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. All right, well, I think that the rooftop addition is totally appropriate. I think that the storefront master plan is also appropriate. I think that to the extent that we can limit the amount of louvers on Fifth Avenue, that would be good. I think even the flagpoles, which I usually feel very strongly are not appropriate, are okay on Fifth Avenue in this location, given the precedent. And I think that the modifications to the storefronts on the side streets are very, very good. The, which leaves the annex. It's a special day when the Victorian Society and the Historic Districts Council both tell you to amp it up. That's a special day. I concur. It seems like you're trying to hide in plain sight. It's, there's a fine line between doing architecture in a contemporary vein that is respectful of and engages in a conversation with historic structures and that just look washed out. I think that you have incorporated some detailing here and that's good. But if you look at the examples that you cited in your own precedent, they all have an assertiveness and independence and internal integrity that allows them to engage in a conversation with their neighbors on an equal footing and not seem to want to disappear. And part of it is the effacement of texture on much of the the frontal plane of the addition. With, a lot of your detail has to do with the base between the plane of the glass and the plane of the facade. But the plane of the facade itself is very stark. And it's not stark in the way of, let's say, you are or Giorgio Grassi or someone like that, where it's stark in a kind of harsh and crisp way. It's stark in that it seems like it's missing something. And this isn't a request to add something as much as to reconsider where you apply your details, where you kind of feel license to design and create integrity. And you could have taken the other option. You could have just said, you know what, I'm going to extend this building just like was done in the historical examples. You can physically make all this stuff. If you really want to hide it, then hide it, you know? Do your rustication, do your, you know, do the brickwork. It's not that hard, we can do these things today. But if you want it to be a contemporary building that stands in a relationship with the existing, I think you got to look at ways to amp it up. And I think you also have to look at what are the main alignments that you're making? It's funny, you know, both in the terms of the base, the top of the baseline and the cornice, it looks like you're just missing the alignments of the existing building, right? The existing building, which has this corner infill that was done afterwards, that creates a very unusual sense of continuity around an unusually long amount of facade. You know, your break between the limestone and the brick, it's like it misses it by a few inches. And the same thing with the cornice, it misses it by, you know, so what's your point there? So I think you got to look at the design of it. The other thing I would say is the marquee. There's something about the marquee that looks more hotel-like and less industrial canopy-like. And I can't quite figure out what it is. Maybe it's the rounded corners, maybe it's the high hats. I, there's something about it that makes it look like a hotel entrance and less like a service entrance to an industrial building, which is what the architect that you showed in your examples is. So I would just ask you to look at the design of the marquee. I don't think the marquee per se is inappropriate. You're right, there are examples of marquees in this district on side street. But there's something about your marks for entrance, that large tympanum without the without the columns coming down, without the division, that just makes it look very, I don't know, it it doesn't seem to fall into the morphology of side street entrances with marquees that you see in the district that I can recall.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Devon?
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot to add to that, but I I, again, the thing that was that stuck out mostly for me was that marquee, which just says Marriott to me, so.
Okay, and Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm fine with the addition on the rooftop. I'm fine with the master plan of the the base on the Fifth Avenue. But I do, based on the testimony and Commissioner Goldblum's do have points in that the weakness seems to be the facade of the new addition on Seventeenth Street. I think I, you know, wherever they, you know, whether further study, work with the staff or whatever the the commission recommends.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Land?
Well, was even accused of being bland. How could they? Well, so Michael Goldblum really said it all, I think, and very well stated my position, so I don't need to restate it, but I think everything he said, I I'm a believer in. I do think, by the way, the the marquee is not only that the roundness just gives it a Marriott feeling, but it's too wide. I think if it if it came in and just went over the center bays, it would be better. But the but the whole, you know, this whole issue of of a bland addition to an existing building versus a very aggressive and maybe wrong wrong kind of design is an interesting infill, kind of urbanistic idea. You know, great urban places are are often made of of pretty innocuous buildings. But I do think this is just too innocuous. It's almost emasculated. And I think the amping up is a good word and without trying to tell the architect how to do that, it needs to be done. I think the building gets weaker and weaker too as it gets higher and higher. That the top is particularly weak. The idea of going to Flemish Bond, which nobody could tell, is just not nearly enough at the top. But I I should think we would let the architect go back and 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 do it himself rather than us pick it apart further. Just, it just needs to be amped up.
Okay, great. Commissioner Lefebvre?
So I definitely want to commend the architect or the applicant for especially, I'm going to leave the building to last, the the work on storefronts, I think is pretty great. And I think this, you know, I appreciate what Michael Goldblum was saying about the louvers, but these these applicants need flexibility in terms of their retail, especially in this market. So I can accept that and accept the fact that we we get these louvers that we might not otherwise like. Otherwise, the, you know, the retention of the detail and the making the molds to make sure the detail is replicated is all wonderful. I think they did a great job on the roof as well. I think, you know, the the building is not, I don't think it needs a tremendous amount of work, but I think it needs some work. I mean, the, I think it, if the goal is to have it relate to the building net, that, you know, to the building next to it, then I, but be modern, I think there are lots of different ways that they can do that with the with the, you know, without designing this. Just, you know, working with the shapes, but not necessarily replicating, maybe not having the same exact coloration in in of the building. And I do, I do think if it's going to be, there does need to be better alignment. But I don't think it needs to scream as something else. I just think it needs a little more distinction, especially when you have an opportunity to to build something. Thirty-eight feet is not wide, but it's it's significant enough to have a presence, and that's what I think we don't have here. I also do want to say that I agree about the marquee. I also think there's almost too much glass above it. And there needs to be a little more definition there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes. On the pavilion on the roof, I think it's fine, works well. As a mechanical enclosure, it's okay. I think the 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 building itself, when you decided to set your building back on the planer setback of the existing building, you said, I wanted to have a subordinate building. That's what you said right away. And it's not a bad idea, you know, subordinate buildings are fine compared to the dominant front. But I think what 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 makes it weak for me is that the horizontal alignments are not strong enough, you know, the natural enough. And the 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 modern sensibility that you have, because you have this double-story space and you set the facade back, it's modern. And you have this marquee sticking out, that doesn't quite work, but I think it could. And I think if you sat back and thought about it and kept the horizontal stronger and kept the shadow lines heavier, you could you could make it work. If you want to have a subordinate building, you know, if you want to have a dominant building, you didn't have to do something.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
He's gone.
I think we had to leave for the day.
Yes, he did. All right, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Thanks. I think I agree with a lot of what's been said. I I think I would back up and firstly, I I may have an argument with even this concept of annex. I mean, I I don't know how this is an annex or needs to be an annex because it's not really about an adjacency, it's some other reference. But if in fact it is an annex, I think that the the example that they shared and that Aaron talked about on page eleven, the middle one, eight eighty, eighty-six Broadway, is interesting, you know, if you can pull that one up on page eleven. And I think it's interesting that in the middle, if you can zoom in on it, because the annex takes on a different kind of rhythm, rhythm in that tall piece, it's a compressed bum 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 window system that's very, that's that's sort of one-third or half the the width of the window systems in the main building. And so that's like a, that's an interesting thing to think about that the, that if you really insist on annex, then it's a kind of some kind of a other sort of frequency than the the modulation of the main building. So, you know, that might be one approach. I think that it's, it is true, this, you know, the other thing that Aaron said is that the building was planer. But I I think that part of the issue and what Commissioner Goldblum brings up is that it's it's actually not planer. It does, it's this kind of a certain kind of like an eighty sculptural thing where it's where it's carved or but neither planer nor detailed in a way that is robust or 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 interesting. So I think that that needs work, but can certainly be resolved. And and I'm not sure that it's the marquee that's the problem. I mean, I think, or that makes it feel like a hotel. It's the double height, the double space with a marquee in the middle, i- in the middle vertically in elevation that makes it do that. That that's the kind of, that's what you know to be that there's in in hotels, that there's a, there's a tall space that you're going to enter, that it greets the the guest at at the level of the street. So if this is in fact residential, I think there's a different language. And if it's something, if it's a hotel, it's a hotel. I mean, I don't know, I didn't hear what the program is, so. There are a couple, I think there are just some kind of misses on the premise that's established and then the kind of how how it's articulated. So again, if annexed and how, doesn't really read like annex, must it be an annex? And if not, then can it stand alone as something that's a little bit more, you know, self-referential and admits to doing that?
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Holford-Smith?
I have a lot, excuse me, a lot of the same comments that my fellow commissioners have. I think that at at the street level, if you're walking down Seventeenth Street, you're not going to have any idea that this is supposed to be an annex. It's going to read as a separate building. So I just, I'm not going to go into design. A lot of people made suggestions, but I I just think that it it needs to be thought, you know, perhaps rethought to some degree. I'm okay with the storefronts and concept. I think they have a lot, a lot, long way to go on the details of those storefronts, especially at the recessed entries that are within the curved bays. On page fifty-three, they're showing a sort of four-inch by four-inch cornier mullion to be put into the corner, which will completely destroy the the idea of the cast iron with projecting bay. So I think they need to look at that and come up with some kind of custom details for that. I don't have any problem with the roof pavilion. And my other comment was that I think that the, I know that the the master plan, so you don't know where the signage is going to be, but on Fifth Avenue, it looked like the signage was overwhelming on that facade.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for remembering to comment on the signage. Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree with, you know, that the rooftop is okay. I think that the storefront master plan is is acceptable. I have share with others concerns about the building, the new building. The first time I thought, I thought it's really not an extension or it can't present its, it could, I guess, present itself that way, but it doesn't. It presents as a new building. And as a new building, I think it it can go further and really be an exciting new building. Or it could go all the way back and try to make it an extension. But I think, I think it probably should just go in the direction of a new building. I think that there can be a marquee and I think some of the comments on the marquee are relevant and can be helpful, I hope, to them. And I'm okay with the flagpoles. And so I don't know if I missed something that Commissioner Holford-Smith just commented on, but I think those those elements are what I would go with, which is work work on the new building further and push it in the direction of an exciting new building, which I think they can very well do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all commissioners for your comments. So I think we're going to take no action today. There were a lot of interesting comments about the annex and and sort of its approach. And I do think that, as Commissioner Goldblum pointed out, even the historic annexes to other buildings had integrity to themselves and architecture to themselves. So I think the guidance is here, whether you think of it as a new building or an annex, it needs to have, I think, a a little bit more architecture to it that speaks to the adjacent building as well as the district as a whole. And that can take the form of thinking about details and proportions. And then I think that there have been a lot of comments on the the amount of glass at the base and its relationship to the marquee and then the marquee's configuration and detail. So that, I think, needs a little bit more exploration. And while we have a lot of support for the storefront master plan, the pavilion, I, since you are going to be coming back to us, I would encourage you to continue to look at the details of those storefronts, particularly at the projecting bays, as Commissioner Holford-Smith mentioned. So we'll take no action and when we return, we'll be focusing primarily on the the annex slash new building and looking at your changes to that. And then any new information you might have about those details, storefront details. And we'll have you back as soon as we can. Okay, and now we're going to quickly go to the final item of the day.
Thanks, Sarah, and thanks, everyone, for bearing with us. This is the last item, number eight, LPC twenty-one dash zero four five seven six, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block twelve eighteen, lot one twenty-nine, one ten West Eighty-Eighth Street, the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Currently a vacant lot. This application is to construct it.
And commissioners, applicants have joined the hearing. Note that staff will be doing a brief introduction and you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Richard Lowry, Preservation Staff. One ten West Eighty-Eighth Street is a vacant lot located at the northwest corner of a larger parcel, which consists of two apartment buildings which front West Eighty-seventh Street and Columbus Avenue. In two thousand fourteen, a certificate of appropriateness was issued to construct a new five-story building on this site. This permit expired in March twenty twenty. The applicant sought to renew the certificate of appropriateness prior to its expiration. However, due to an issue at the Department of Buildings and the beginning of the pandemic, the application couldn't be completed in time. The proposal before you today is for the same scope of work and the design remains unchanged. Jordan Rogoff and Lester Katz of DXA Studio are here to present the proposal and answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you for the introduction and this is Jordan Rogoff, Principal of DXA Studio. I praised your stamina today. I think I was the first, now the last presenter. So I I promise to be brief. This, this is another one of our, the DXA Greatest Hits. We're pulling it out of the vault. We presented this to you, as Richard mentioned, in two thousand fourteen. It is a infill townhouse building. I, just like before, I'm having a little bit of difficulty. There we go, whoops. Bear with me, okay? We are located in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. The address is one ten West Eighty-Eighth Street. It is, if you can see my cursor, what we're discussing is the sixteen-foot-wide parcel that's part of the larger development of one oh one West Eighty-seventh Street, which I believe was approved in two thousand seven and completed right around the time that we came to present to you before in two thousand fourteen. The townhouse was was one of, a row house was one of eight done by Samuel Reed in eighteen eighty-six. And as Richard mentioned, we had had an approval which expired recently. But but prior to our approval, there was an approval in two thousand seven, which can be seen here by CMA Architects. And they would propose a little row house in this parcel along with the large addition top one oh one West Eighty-seventh. So this is part of that proposal, which was an extension renovation of an existing building and then multiple-story addition. And so that portion was built, the townhouse was not realized. This is what had been approved previously. And then this is what was built at one oh one West Eighty-seventh Street. These are the Samuel Reed buildings in a series of tax photos in nineteen forty. And then again, in nineteen eighty, you'll see, right around nineteen eighty, we believe, is when the the building was demolished. It's the easternmost of the eight that were built in eighteen eighty-six. And as you can see from some of these context images, really beautiful and eclectic group of row houses. And so in in putting together the design for kind of the missing piece to this, we really studied both the Samuel Reed row houses and those throughout the district and in particular on West Eighty-Eighth Street, where there's just a beautiful continuous fabric of of row houses. So in in studying the kind of compositional elements throughout the district, we looked at ours being the last of of a row and closest to the avenue on Columbus Avenue. We looked at kind of the transitional, you know, relationship between the avenue building and the last row house or last mid-block building. And so we looked at kind of the the difference in articulation and scale that happens as kind of one element. We looked at the materiality of of the buildings throughout the district and on West Eighty-Eighth in a singular material. uh, in a singular material, uh, brownstone, uh, limestone alike, expressed, uh, a single material, but articulated in much different ways with rusticated base, ornament, as you see on the, the example all the way on the left, it's fifty-six West Eighty-Eighth Street. We looked at, uh, compositional elements like bay windows. And in, in particular, in the Samuel Reed, um, uh, buildings, each bay window is articulated in a different manner. It's kind of a different presence in form. And then all the way around the, the district, you see different bay windows. The stoop as well is a prominent feature, a beautiful kind of transition and procession into each one of the row houses and creating this, this fantastic space, uh, on the sidewalk. And then we got very analytical about it and started looking at the balance of unifying and diversifying elements that make up the, the Samuel Reed, uh, buildings in particular with, uh, you know, devices like the belt coursing or kind of strong datums across the facade and the rusticated base, uh, down below. And then diversifying elements like the, uh, the pediments and the, uh, and the different windows, all vertically oriented, one over one, uh, windows, and done at different, um, uh, different sizes all the way across the, the, the group of buildings. And then even some kind of outliers, these kind of curved windows that were happening. Another diversifying element we saw was the, um, color of the, uh, of some of the buildings where you, there was a switch from the kind of brownstone or brick, uh, to the lighter, uh, lighter buildings. And that only, um, kind of added to the, uh, to the, the very interesting balance and diversity of, of, of presence of the facades. And it was something, something that we were drawn to. We wanted to play on that diversification, but still have those binding elements. Like, one of the problems that we had with the two thousand seven approval was that the datums were disregarded. And so that was the first thing we brought back is making sure that the, the belt coursing, uh, continued across our facade in that a, a, a much more modern or contemporary interpretation of the bay window in the form of a large kind of parlor, uh, aperture. And then also articulating the windows in the upper stories in the same vertical and narrow manner. But we've done it in a, a little different way, which I'll show shortly in some of the details. So up close, you can see that, that these, this is actually continuous glazing that happens. It's a steel, uh, glazing and the same kind of, uh, window, oops, excuse me, the same window pattern, uh, like a one over one. However, it's been shifted down so that you have a, uh, a case, or I'm sorry, an awning type, uh, window or hopper, rather, so that you can access a series of, 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 built-in of flower, uh, boxes. So the bird in nature of, of West Eighty-Eighth Street really struck us on our first site visit. And we thought that it'd be great to have the building communicate with that sensibility. And so these integrated flower boxes and plantings and a green roof, uh, and, and tree out front were all kind of part of the kind of imagining of, of, of this row house. So here's a montage, uh, with the kind of missing tooth, um, of, of, uh, of our one-ten building. And then, uh, reinstating that, bringing that back. And, and like any elevation, this is not how you experience it with the top floor setback. So we have some visibility studies, which will show, uh, a little bit later to show just, just how, um, you know, the setback that is. Here, here are the building elevations. One thing worth noting is the facade is done in kind of small, uh, limestone bricks and the secondary facades on the, the sides and rear of the building are done in a, in a buff brick that matches the Indiana limestone, um, of the, of the facade. So up close, we have larger, uh, versions of the, uh, of the limestone. It's kind of a parallel to the rusticated base. And then what happens is the scale shifts down on the body of the building. However, that rusticated base, rather than terminating along that datum, actually continues up in the form of a frame, which culminates in a cornice. A couple of details, uh, further in here. So here you see the kind of side by side of that scale shift that happens for the body of the building. And here we go, the, the site is located right here. And we just wanted to show the kind of, uh, continuous donut of the block and the fact that the kind of easternmost portion of that donut is part of the one oh one West Eighty-seventh Building, of which, uh, this, this, uh, uh, row house would be a part of the, the same zoning lot there. Uh, this is a shot of the donut while, um, uh, one oh one West Eighty-seven was under construction. Uh, these are just very briefly, uh, the, the big challenge with this project was with the sixteen-foot-wide lot, can you make a, a fully functioning, really wonderful, uh, row house? So we got as clever as we could with the plan and we believe the answer is yes, that this, these are really great plans and a, um, a very functional and, and beautiful, uh, series of layouts. Uh, here it is in building section. Should be noted, this is all as-of-right zoning, so it's well within the, the, the max building height and setbacks, uh, required. Here are the visibility studies, uh, up and down West Eighty-Eighth Street, showing that setback upper floor, um, uh, not really being visible. This is probably the most visible vantage point from view six, um, uh, right, right here. My cursor keeps disappearing, sorry, right here. And then negligible from, from other vantage points. And, uh, yes, that's, uh, as I mentioned, it, it falls within the as-of-right zoning and actually leaves quite a bit of FAR, uh, on the table. But it, but it works very well, uh, for its stated program of a, a single-family, uh, townhouse. And that is the presentation.
Great, thank you so much. Oops, sorry. I have a dog barking in the background. I apologize. So, um, thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't think we have any questions. Let's see, we have testimony. Anyone in the meeting who would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Anthony to walk us through that testimony.
Thank you, Sarah. We do have a couple of people who signed up. The first person I'm going to bring in is Mark Diller. Mark, you're in the meeting and just please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, good evening, I guess. I'm Mark Diller. I am a member of the, uh, Community Board Seven Preservation Committee. I'm grateful to the Chairs, Kay Carpen and Michelle Parker, for giving me the chance to present today's testimony. You may remember that at one time I was the Chair of the Board, but I am no longer. I'm here to present our resolution to disapprove. The, the vote on the disapproval was thirty-three in favor, uh, to three to zero to zero. So it was a strongly worded vote of disapproval. This application is very similar to one that we saw in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And, uh, with the exception of slightly scaling down of that monumental window on the front facade, it is, um, and, and has changed, a little bit of a change in the rustication effect on the front facade. It is what we saw before, um, and we are equally robust in our disapproval now. This is a very intact block of townhouses, uh, both the group of eight, of which this is the eighth, the missing piece, as well as others down the block on both sides. It is not a transition to the avenue in the sense that there are places in our historic district where Columbus Avenue buildings have been replaced by much more modern structures. Here, the building on the corner is, um, very similar in, in age and, um, and composition to the ones that are, um, along the side street. I'd like to take the liberty of reading to you what we wrote in two thousand fourteen, because it really kind of summarizes how we feel about this building. Both our appreciation for all the research done by the architects and the applicant, but our disagreement with the sense of the place that they are, um, seeking to change. We write and we quote that while the applicant has carefully analyzed the architectural styles, vocabulary, details and materials of row houses in the Upper West Side Historic Districts, and more specifically the row houses within the immediate neighborhood, the proposal does not incorporate or reference those design elements in a manner sympathetic to the context. The Preservation Committee of Community Board Seven, um, and ultimately the Board, believes that the proposed design of the new row house is overscaled for its context, overly formal and rectilinear in its design, too cool in its materials and color palette and lacks the whimsy, warmth and variety of its neighbors. And it finds the, uh, it found the, um, it found the proposal to be, um, highly inappropriate to that immediate context. There was a confusion in our, um, or actually there was a confusion in the presentation made to our Preservation Committee about what was approved previously. Um, and so to explain our resolution just a little bit, let me just note that, um, it was not clear that the building that is on page four, for example, of the slides, was approved from the CMA proposal in two thousand oh seven, as opposed to the proposal that was, uh, uh, approved by, uh, your commission back in two thousand fourteen. So, um, that is, um, a concern with respect to the resolution or the presentation that has now been clarified by this presentation today. So I'm grateful for that and grateful to see that this presentation is indeed the one that was approved back in two thousand fourteen. But we continue to urge you to disapprove this application for the reasons stated in two thousand fourteen that are equally applicable today. I thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. And the next person is Sean Corsandi. Sean, you should be in the meeting.
Good evening, Commissioners, Sean Corsandi for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates the architect's effort to catalog the many rich elements from within the district. While there are an embarrassment of options to choose from, the proposed design seemingly chose none. For example, while among the district's row houses, there are a minority of limestone and/or light painted brownstone buildings, there are even fewer, if any, light colored brick buildings, such as that proposed at mid-block for an Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. While there was originally an array of pediment types within this row and on this block, none are emulated in the new construction. While rustication is identified throughout the row and block, the modern iteration isn't apparent. And while a variety of window bays are identified as precedent, none are included in the proposed facade. Lastly, while belt courses are discussed, aside from the main entrance transom, there are no apparent meaningful alignments to the surviving row. Maintaining the street setback of the row is another designer's choice, which we can accept, as is the additional height proposed for an end-of-row site. But the committee overwhelmingly felt that while, in and of itself, this may be a great row house design, it does not attempt to correspond to its direct context of the row, the context of West Eighty-Eighth Street, nor the context of the greater Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. We sense the applicant knows what to look for as it lies within their own presentation. But as currently designed, the Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee cannot support the application. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is Kelly Carroll.
Okay, Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. HTC is an advocate of the row house and we welcome new construction of this typological tradition. Here, we found the house largely successful, but we are unconvinced about the treatment of the picture window. Our committee wondered why the horizontal element that all of the other windows have is absent on this one window and why its length was not extended to relate to the placement of the other openings. Otherwise, this house will be an appropriate filling to the hole on the block. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is John Graham. John, you are in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. The VSNY finds this proposed new row house generally appropriate. The design will blend, help it blend into the street skate by incorporating a stoop with double doors and a transom, an historic facade material, punched window openings on the upper floors and floor levels which are very close to alignment with the adjacent historic houses. In addition, it's positioned between the end of this historic row of three-story-plus basement row houses and the adjacent five-story apartment building. And the fact that four of the row houses have either dottre triangular gables, which rise six or eight feet above the horizontal, allows construction of a new building with a four-story street wall here, which will not stand out awkwardly on the skyline. However, we recommend that a horizontal mullion be added to the large single pane window on the second floor to help it relate to the other divided windows proposed for this facade. And that the width of the single pane window, which doesn't appear to align with either the door opening on the parlor floor or the window openings on the third floor, be restudied to create a more unified facade. Finally, some of those who reviewed the proposal recommend that the use of light-colored limestone be reconsidered, noting that all the buildings in this row, as well as the corner apartment building, are dark red brick and brownstone, except where these materials have been painted. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. There is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony? We've heard from the community board, but.
Right, there are no additional written comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jordan, would you like to respond to the comments?
Sure. I'll say just briefly, uh, regarding the CB seven, that when we first presented to them in, I think it was late two thousand thirteen, there is a, a number of requests that they made for us to alter the design. And to the best of my knowledge, we, we, uh, we did follow through on a lot of those. It was rethinking the pediment. It was rethinking the composition or sizing of the doors, uh, the entry doors, rethinking the bay window. So there's a number of, of things in the first meeting that we had with CB seven, uh, that, that we actually took on. We might not have got everything on their list, but I just want to not, to be acknowledged that, that a, an effort was made to, uh, to take, uh, their input and to, uh, really, uh, bring that into, uh, the revised design that was presented to, uh, uh, LPC a few months later. As far as the comments about, uh, the, the, the light color being inappropriate and there not being much many in the neighborhood, I, I think our analysis kind of clearly shows, we counted building by building, that, you know, really, uh, one in six, uh, buildings around the, the district are light colored. Yes, many of those are painted, but there are, uh, there are a number of exceptions in limestone, so. And then finally, I think there was a comment about, uh, datums and us not, uh, baking that into the design. And I think that that is such a fundamental part of this. It's what makes it clear that, that is absolutely a part of our design. It might be a little bit more understated than the continuous belt coursing, but there is a projected, uh, sill, uh, that, that echoes what's happening on the, uh, the adjacent buildings. So, uh, all of those things were really important to us and we might have stated them in a different, uh, manner. But, uh, but nonetheless, uh, we hope that it reads, uh, for, for most people as, as a response to the, the, the great work that Samuel Reed did in those adjacent row houses.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions? Okay, I am starting to unmute and request to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. All right, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion at the hearing?
Still moved.
And Commissioner Lexi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And, um, as was stated, this was a design that the commission approved in two thousand fourteen and many of you, um, were on the commission and may even remember it. I think that lots of the comments we've heard today were things that we also considered in two thousand fourteen, including the overall height, the fenestration pattern and the materiality and choice of materials. And I think that, um, you know, at the time, the commission found that while this is a very intact block, that there are a number of different rows, each sort of intact and, and consistent within the row, but there are so many different rows with different styles but there are so many different rows with different styles and different expressions, and limestone buildings on this, on the street. And that, in addition to being near the taller tenement, the commission at that time found the building's height and materiality and sort of a modern expression to be appropriate, given that variety here. And I think in terms of the large windows, last time we were persuaded, I believe that the the detail work in the masonry facade provided a lot of depth and articulation. So those were some of the comments that I remember at the time. But certainly, we have an opportunity to look at this again, and since it's expired, and and we have some new commissioners, so I think it'll be an interesting discussion. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Bland, you were here at the time.
I was here, and I don't particularly remember this. But that's sort of typical with me, I forget a lot of things. It's just starting all over again. So who knows what I'm going to say and how it might parallel what I said back then. I presume I was here for it and made some comment on it. I think this is a very interesting assignment here, and partially easier because it's at the end of the row, not in the middle of the row. And therefore, it's a transitional site. It just is, whatever one wants to call it. It's transitioning between the avenue building and then the row, very robust. And one might even say idiosyncratic series of robust and muscular buildings. As a designer myself, I can't imagine looking at one of those buildings and trying to in any way reference them. I think it would become a parody and a travesty. So, again, as a designer, I think the approach taken here to create a new design that very, very, very modestly acknowledges from various floor planes and so forth, the row houses that are in the, to the right of this photograph. So so therefore, I'm left with, is it internally consistent? Is it in an internally design? And are the materials the right materials, and are they being used in in an inventive way? And I say inventive now because, boy, everything next to it is inventive. So cursing through what we've just witnessed in the last project, if this were overly bland, overly uninventive, I think it would be wrong. It needs to be fairly robust. And it is contemporary, and it's abstracted to some degree, which I think is appropriate. But I don't think it's lacking interesting detail. And I think, all in all, I think the cornice is interesting, a little bit weak. And but the height of it, you see the height of the of the distance between the top window, the top of the top window and the corner and the buildings next to it. I think that's an interesting parallel that the architect has used here. And rather than bay windows and and arches and all the rest of the paraphernalia going on in the, in the existing row, I think the large, that large one window is kind of taking the place of all that other stuff. And I think in a modern contemporary idiom, it's successful. And as you know, I don't like to pick designs apart and say, do this, do that, change that little thing, put that here. We've got a good designer. I think, I just leave it alone. And I think I heard the testimony, interestingly, varied. People are reversing positions that I might have thought. The Victorian Society thinks it's great. The local community board thinks it's terrible. I don't know, I was surprised by all of that. But nonetheless, I think, let's not prolong it, it's a late evening. I can approve it as it is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lexi?
Though I wasn't here for the first first iteration, and for, and this is an amazing block. I just have to say that. To be able to, you know, see it this way, it's like stepping back and really, I cannot believe how much is going on, but how well, how each building has its own character, but how well they will blend together in their sets. And I think it, you know, I think Fred might have said this, I think, well, first of all, there are a few applicants that come before us that do amazing study of what's around their site and have very good analysis. And they use that information well when they design their projects. And one of them happens to be DXA. And this particular project is no exception. I think the analysis here is very, very good. And I think what's going on is it's done not to replicate, which made no sense, but to create something that draws on what's there. All of the attributes and all of the connections between the buildings and the idiosyncratic aspects of it. And then the applicant designed a project that is very, very handsome, has very, very interesting but understated detail. And and it, as Fred said, it works because, not only because it's at the end of a row, which I think it might not have worked as well if it had been in the beginning or in the middle, but it works well because it's not trying to compete. It's almost paying homage to what's there. So I like so much about it. I like the use of the limestone and the shift to the brick on the block. I think the bill, the, I agree that the windows, slim windows on the upper floors relate to what's going on further down on the block. And I see the larger window as almost like a new expression of a bay window. And that works just as well. And I think the limestone slat screen is a modern display of detail, but it's all very understated. And I think the height is fine. So I can approve this, and I think it's a very good.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I can approve this building, and I think it works well. My only issue with it, my only issue, is that because of its location between a red building and two two red-colored buildings, that maybe it's too vibrant within that composition. So for example, you know, this is a series of brownstone of the same proportions, and each one having a different facade or character. And then we get to this one that says, I want to be a humble building, a modern, a simpler building. But it really works for me, except that it's too bright. But if that doesn't happen, I can approve.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Thank you. Can you please go to page six? So I actually do don't think that this is, if there ever is such a thing as a transition building, I don't think this is one of them. So I'll disagree with Commissioner Bland on that. And especially because of that gap, the gap between the tall building and this building that will remain. I'm sorry, that's not on, yeah, well, that's. So I actually think it really, really, really belongs to this or needs to belong to this row. And and I'm thinking on a couple of levels, it doesn't quite achieve that belonging to the row. I think that the light color is, and given their analysis, is acceptable because there are other light-colored buildings. I think that the corbling and the various sort of latticing, shallow latticing, corbling is really interesting and is an interesting kind of contemporary interpretation. Perfectly great. But the other buildings on this side and on this row, even building number one, four, seven, which is the contemporary, the modern building, they have a kind of, they have an internal, each one of the buildings has an internal symmetry or even center line, whether that's accentuated by the, you know, the peaked roofs or not, or the arches, or the, and what and what this applicant's proposal shows us is not that kind of butterflying, that kind of center line. It's, it's, in other words, there's not a kind of a heaviness on either side of it. It's sort of everywhere. Everywhere, meaning that there are, you know, there are bigger, the windows read as windows, bigger windows, and that they are more important in a sense than the solid, unperforated material. So I think it doesn't, it just doesn't do that. It doesn't, it doesn't relate to this kind of language. And I agree 100% with Commissioner Bland that there's absolutely no replicating the kind of the ornamentation, the kind of the style, any of that. But as I said, even building number seven, I think achieves that internal symmetry that I think is so, is so interesting and relates. Finally, I'll just say that I think that I cannot agree or approve the height, the extra, that extra height, because again, I think this thing needs to belong to this immediate row and not to the taller building towards the avenue. And that the extra story just takes it to another place altogether. Again, it doesn't, it doesn't relate. So a lot of pretty things that could happen, and I have absolutely no problem with a contemporary or new interpretation here, but one that relates on the, with respect to the symmetry and also to the height is something that I would look for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I'm struggling about what, how I feel about this building. And I think that I think for me, if the, I understand that, you know, you could never compete with these buildings in terms of their idiosyncrasy and their whimsy. But I guess what I wish is that the building had a little more oomph to it. I just worry that the, that the details are so subtle, they're very elegant and beautiful, but I just, I just wonder if that's, anyone's going to, you know, really appreciate the the subtle change in the scale of the limestone bricks and the very shallow recess of that center panel. So for me, I just was wanting it to be a little bit more, a little bit stronger in its conviction. And I think I agree that the limestone between these big expanses of brown, reddish-brown, fresh, bright, new limestone might really stand out and make it even more of an anomaly. So I'm not sure what material would be more appropriate, but I think something darker would be better.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm good, Diana.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Chapin?
Doesn't want to talk.
You're muted, Diana.
That west side of the table always, you know, had this issue. And remember, our chair is an east sider.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have Commissioner Goldblum comment first if he'd like to, but anyway. You know, it's it's always difficult for us trying to, you know, look at modern buildings in a historic context. And I I feel like this, you know, while it's modern, is making an attempt to be referential. And the windows and the sort of a gesture to the bay and I and some of the detailing I think is successful. I agree that it could be more expressive. I feel like the issue of the cornice is not, for me, a particular issue because the row doesn't really there aren't, there aren't a lot of the cornice expressions are really very light in this row. And this row is really exceptional and unusual in its character. And I, it's hard to compete with that, I think, with a new design. I think in general that I can find that it is modern and, you know, somewhat referential. So given that we did previously approve it, I can, I think, support it in this case. I could have supported something that was more expressive. But, you know, that's, I guess that's, that's how I feel at this point. And see what others have to say.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, thanks. Got to feel bad for Jordan. Got here first, has to stay till the end. Lucky, luckily, we're on Zoom. And had two projects, it's got to be a record, two projects that both got votes of approval that had to be reconsidered. So, bad for him, but I do remember this project. But I thought that the presentation was a very interesting one in that the extensive granular analysis of the row was kind of like a magic trick where, you know, look here, look here, look here, and then boom! It's something completely different. It's not what you expected. Or at least not what I expected. I think that the level of analysis has produced a scheme that is almost academic in the way it kind of extrapolates fine, fine distinctions while keeping a distance. And I think that the reason that it does so is that it's taking the point of view of being not part of the row. It's not trying to be part of this row. It's trying to live happily next door to it. But it's not, it's, it looks like many, you know, I've seen a bunch of these townhouse on the Upper West Side. And this is in Park Slope. This isn't Vanderbilt, you know, I'm spacing on the other district, and, you know, it's not super uniform. It's not Ridgewood. It's full of variety. And you do have cases where there are infill sites or ends where you have buildings that are one-offs next to a row, in between rows, that are different. And I think that this is not trying to be part of the row. It's trying to be an admittedly modern, contrasting end cap to a distinctive row. And I think it uses the analysis and the very delicate extrapolations, the sill lines, you know, general, general kind of odd organization strategies as a way to blend and feel good next to it without being part of the row. I disagree with Adi on that score. I don't think it needs, I think the height is okay because of its transitional location next to the taller building. The one thing that I do agree with Adi on 100%, though, is I think that the one mistake is the spacing of the windows on the upper two floors. And if you look at the buildings to the right, you know, the row, the thing that distinguishes them is the weight and centrality of the window, the window, you know, the architecture is kind of pushed to the center with very wide sides, very wide planer sides. And it's that density and kind of the density of the, of the, of the, kind of the architecture in the middle that gives those houses their distinctiveness. And I think that this, by having the more conventional window spacing, loses that sense of connection that it could have with the neighbors. However, I don't think that's a fatal situation, and I think it is appropriate as is. And I would vote for it the way I voted for it six years ago.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. I believe I voted for it before. And upon reflection, I think this building by a lesser architect would have nabbed little details off of all the other buildings and slapped them, slap-dash onto this thing. And I think that the facade has been handled very well. If there was one thing that I would reconsider from, from the previous If there was one thing that I would reconsider from the previous approval, it would be a reduction in that spandrel above the top windows. I agree with Adi that it's too tall, but I don't think it's too, too tall. And so I would say if it came down four feet, I would be much happier about it. But again, that's not, I mean, obviously, I approved it last time, and it wasn't an issue for me then, but it was the thing that struck me immediately seeing it again this time. So I'd love to see it come down just a little.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I wasn't here the first time when this was, so I had to be deferential to the previous approval. And also, I agree with many of the comments that were, especially how Commissioner Goldblum eloquently taken this. He should really be a New York Times architectural critic. You know, very, very thorough. And obviously, you do have a very good designer and that did a very thorough analysis. But many of the comments about if you could refine it and revisit this thing could have... I mean, I'm not about to play designer here, but some of the comments are invalid. And this is a beautiful row. And it is, you know, the existing buildings all have a centrality, symmetry to it. That's the common, but obviously, in this case, the proposal is slightly to, did not follow that pattern as an end case. And so, and then the, so this is, you know, I could support the majority.
Okay. So I think, I think we do have a majority of Commissioners who do support this design approach, but each has sort of mentioned a few things, refinements that they think would make it even better. So in particular, just looking at the tone of the limestone, looking at the, just the proportions of the spandrels and relationship to the fenestration. So I think, I'm just, and maybe just thinking about having the details be even a little less subtle, let's say. So I think these are very fine refinements, but I'm not sure we're ready to just sort of hand it over to the staff. So I think what we'll do is we will take no action. Jordan, I think these are minor refinements, and with those changes, the majority of the Commissioners would support it. So I think you can probably do this pretty quickly and come back to us very soon, and we'll revisit it then.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you again for staying late for us, we appreciate it. And I hope to have no more records as Commissioner Goldblum. I think, by the way, I think we should make him do a mock-up.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for somebody else to do visual studies for this project, too, so maybe they'll come in later.
All right, so, thank you, thank you, Jordan. We'll see you back soon. And thank you, Commissioners, for a very long day and sticking it out and staying thoughtful and considering everything so carefully throughout the day. And we'll, we will see you next week, we have a break, and we'll see you on February, sorry, February 2nd, yes.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have all the spectators, please, the Hindus, please, sign up?
Yes, and we're now going to be ending the...